Four times?
Yeah.
Good evening, welcome to our February eighteen twenty twenty-five city council meeting. It is seven oh one P M. Some meeting is not in session, some changes of the city council.
Change of procedure.
Change of procedure. If anyone would like to address the council, please fill out a speaker card and submit it to the assistant city clerk prior to the start of oral communications. Otherwise, your speakers slip will not be accepted. Also, oral commu- commuties.
Communication.
Communications will start after presentations. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Al Richardson from the New Beginning Christian Fellowship West Covina, and Councilwoman Diaz will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise.
Thank you. Thank you all, it's an honor to be here. Pay your hearts to my. Heavenly Father, we gather here today with grateful hearts, seeking your guidance and wisdom as decisions are made that impact our community. We ask for clarity of thought and unity of purpose among all the city council members, Father. May their decisions be filled with respect and understanding, and may we open, and may we be open to a diverse perspectives. Help us to prioritize the need of our citizens and to act with integrity and compassion. Grant us the strength to face challenges and the courage to pursue what is just and right. May their efforts lead to a better future for all, fostering peace, prosperity, and harmony within our city. We thank you for this opportunity to serve and for the strength to work together for the common good of our city, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Gentlemen, please remove your caps and repeat af- put your right hand over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. Councilman Condos.
Present.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Present.
Mayor Proterm Lopez Viado.
Present.
Mayor Wu.
Here.
City Attorney, is there anything to be reported out of closed session?
Nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
Certifications of appreciation Student Government Day. Tonight, we will be recognizing students that participated in the Student Government Day. The Community Service Division, in partnership with the West Covina Quantas Club, and students from the West Covina were provided with the opportunity to familiarize themselves with the operations and functions of their local government by interacting with the city council and city staff. The event allowed the students to tour City Hall, the Police Department, and participate with staff in a mock city council meeting.
And as I remember this morning, the, your mission is to cut two million dollar budget. So, Mayor, you want to report to the audience and the staff, what is the solution?
So, we decided to cut some budget from the E R, from the H R, from the Police Department, I T, um, Fire Department. Do you remember, I think, Communications?
Community Service.
Community Service.
Good job, that's our dream, we cannot cut nothing at all. We only increase the budget, we never cut, okay? And so maybe each of city council, you want to see what you learn? Okay, we start with Councilman Ollie?
Of course, so this, I am really thankful to be a part of this today. This is my third year being a part of the Student Government Day. So every year, it's been something a little bit new. Definitely this year, it was a little change, but overall, one thing I always learned is the importance of having a government in our city, and having people that represent us all as citizens, and represent the greater good that we see in our city. And it's just been a blessing to be here the past three years, and I'm really thankful for it.
Good job, Andy, go to the Councilwoman Diaz.
Oh, it was really interesting to be a part of this event, like, it was really fun, and I, like, it was cool to see, like, how the government, like, sort of works. I didn't realize, like, how much money, like, is spent in a government, which is really, like, interesting to kind of put into perspective, because you don't really think about that type of stuff.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
It was really interesting to see how everything functioned, how many divisions there are, like Police, Fire, H R, and other divisions. It was really interesting, and I'm thankful to be a part of it.
Mayor Proterm Lopez Viado.
First, I would like to say how grateful I am for this opportunity, and as someone who wants to do something related to the government in the future, it was such an interesting day to take in and just learn about the different branches that we do have here at West Covina. And it was a delight to see how everything works behind the scenes, and just being in these conversations, it was very great, and I enjoyed it.
City Clerk.
Thank you for having us all today. I learned a lot, I learned about budgeting, I learned how to address meetings, and yeah, I'm very grateful for this opportunity.
City Manager.
Do you have anybody?
No, I did not have anyone today, unfortunately. I can tell you what I learned.
Look like our student City Manager scared about cutting two million dollar budget. She might be, he or she might be in trouble, okay? So, they might have protests outside, so she said, no, I'm not going to show up. So, but, but, okay, I want to say thank you so much for Kiwani Club to put this every years for the last ten years, okay? And maybe some other student want to share with, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot the mayor.
It was a really amazing thing that we did today. I learned a lot, because I did not know that the West Covina government had so many branches and divisions in it. Also, as someone mentioned before, how much money is into our city, it was a lot of money, and it was really hard to cut, because everything is important here, so I had a really good experience here.
So you want to be a real mayor in one day?
That would be pretty cool, yes.
Just come out to run when you turn eighteen, okay? So, okay, we might be, okay, cannot win you, so everybody have a chance. And any other student want to share with us? And Brad, you want to come out and introduce some of your student? Okay, maybe you can some to share with us regarding how important, how meaningful for our student to come to share about how to run the government. Go ahead, Brad. In the front, we're here. Yes, please, so people can hear you from the T V.
So I'll speak to you.
Okay, sir, yeah, go ahead.
The West Covina Quantas Club is certainly happy to bring this program to the city. We've been doing this for ten years, and it's an opportunity for us to have our students here in the West Covina area to come and see how a school, a city is run. It's difficult to get really involved with national, state, county governments, but it's really easy to get involved with the city. You guys meet twice a week in a place that is easy to get to. You, all you have to do is come to these meetings, hand a note, and you can say whatever you want to say to the council. If you have questions, you can ask them. If you have complaints, you can give them. If you have suggestions, you can make them. And every once in a while, you can applaud them. But today, they got to see the inside. At one point, they all were assigned a division within the city, and they met with the directors of those departments, and they spent about a half hour to forty-five minutes learning about that department, and why they shouldn't cut from their department, so they could argue before the council. I know the council had a very difficult time trying to decide how to make it, and I, but I think their decisions were done properly. You guys made good choices. You might get fired after cutting the Fire Department, though. But I, we enjoy doing this, I think the kids enjoy it, the city, I can't believe the amount of support we get from the city and all the department chairs that spend so much time with these kids, that they know it's important to have the kids come through and learn about city government. We certainly think so, and I think the kids have learned a lot. Thank you. Oh, and I would like to thank Miguel Quijada for helping coordinate this. I would like to thank Miguel Quijada for coordinating this. Again.
Okay, and any student want to share your experience? Don't be shy, or any teacher, okay? Would you please, want to share anything? Come. It's a, hey, if I can talk, you can talk better than me, okay? So, want to share, share with us? Yeah, come.
So hi, my name is Matthew, I'm from Edgewood High School, and this is my first year doing this program like this, provided by my teachers and my principal. And just overall, today's experience was not something to be overlooked. At our school, we do take pride into our leadership as our, as our thing is a pride of West Covina, and I feel seeing leadership at work, not just in a community we know, but in outside community that's unknown to us, I believe could be valued more, in a sense. And just overall, the way a government works, the mechanics of it, and not even just here, but other branches within, within the government, is something to just be proud of, just as a community, and even though we're a small community, again, it was, how much, one hundred and six thousand, hundred and seven thousand?
About one.
Uh, population?
A hundred twenty thousand.
Hundred, it's my bad, a hundred twenty-seven thousand people, that's still a lot of, that's still a lot of people and a lot of lives, a lot of different lives that, again, experience it different ways, like, people over here and people over there experience it many different ways, but in the end, it's all about working together as a community, and just overall, having each other's backs at the end. And I believe this leadership and the city that's being run by these councilmen and the, these council people, sorry, and the mayor is doing a phenomenal job as well, and I hope to see that in the future when I grow up. Thank you.
Your, your first name? Matthew, I think you would be a good politician. You can speak good, okay? Okay, where you leave, you want to run for city council? Okay, hey, anybody's after eighteen years old, you have a chance, but I want to wish you the best. You say exactly how you feel about the local government, because we come from the resident, the taxpayer, elect us, and we willing to serve. And you saw a very difficult decision, police, fire, community services, finance, okay, and the public work, it's all very important to our running the city. And you can see how we keep the city clean, how we keep the city safe, and that is a big task. So, okay, and our principal for the South Hill High School, right? Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Terry Evernethy. I, I love this opportunity, come to this district last year, and just seeing the students in action and really collaborating together with Edgewood, West Covina, Mount SAC Academy, all of the different groups that come together, really has made me really look at things in a different perspective. And then hearing my students talk about how the different departments really kind of defended themselves through a presentation, and the making the tough cuts were really, you know, difficult, and it wasn't easy, and talking about social emotional health and, and different things that need to really support those cuts. And so, I, I just really appreciate this, thank you, Mayor Wu, and everyone that put it together, Mr. Manning, I really appreciate you and all the support as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Principal. And West Covina High School, I think we have Janet, okay? Any other school representative, come? Hey, you will be, come to speak, you will be on T V, YouTube forever.
Hi, I'm Lea Lopez, I'm from South Hills, I'm the A S B president. Something that I just wanted to come up and say that I noticed no one else said, was just how I loved, like, the one-on-one time that I got with the leaders in our community, because I feel like something that young people in general really, like, need is to feel valued, and I felt like, other than just, like, talking at us and, like, us learning about what, how our government runs, I think I got, like, to feel valued, and I was personally in the I T group, and I feel like our lead really was, like, learning about us and valuing, like, our experiences. We talked about just, like, what we wanted in our future, like, where we wanted to go to college, like, I felt a personal connection rather than just, like, being talked at, and like, I really appreciate, he's not there? I was also in his group last year, but I really just appreciated, like, feeling valued, and having that, like, one-on-one connection where I got to, like, have a conversation rather than just learn from them. And I got the same experience from all of the leaders, especially in the Fire Department and the Police Department, when we were on those tours, I felt like we were able to, like, conversate with them, and they wanted to know about our lives as much as we wanted to know about theirs. So yeah, I really appreciated that and valued that experience today. So thank you.
Good job, good job. You, you can see, okay, Brad, okay, your program really impact our student, okay? And the one time, okay, one day, they will become our leader, because sooner or later we will be retired, and those, those kids will be the leader, take over, and run the city. Don't forget, okay, we come from the resident of West Covina, you are the resident of West Covina, so one day, you should take over and be good and run this, this proud city. And I know you will do it, look, he's smiling already, okay? He has a very ambitious career in the future. Any other city, okay, and any other student want to share? Okay, who? Okay, come over here. Yeah, oh, I remember you, you get my pin. He answer, I asked how many fire station we have in West Covina, and, and he answered the right answer, okay? So it's pretty good, go ahead.
My name's Joshua Fermileno, and I'm part of Mount SAC Early College Academy, and as a resident from La Puente, it's very, it, this experience really showed me how governments can sometimes affect into other cities, because the West Covina has a Fire Department, right? But I didn't know that La Puente didn't, I always thought that it had, but the fact that West Covina provides for us with Fire Department, with stuff like that, it just really had, like, a really big revelation how we help other people in time of need, and especially with that presentation from the morning, where West Covina helps with the eastern and Palisades fires, it really just showed, like, a bright light in my head, and I just really, it really shows what the government is, and I really enjoy this experience.
So, so how many, how many station we have in West Covina? How many?
Five.
I, I already gave you the pin, so, okay. He answer exactly correct, we have a five station spread out in this big city and serve our community, but thank you so much, appreciate, good job, okay? And I think if no speaker, we are going to have our mayor to give our certificate for each of our participant, okay? It's the city clerk, okay? And you want to give the certificate?
Read the name?
Yeah.
I'm so sorry if I butcher your name.
By, by the way, we have all the high school, we have Covina Valley Unified, South Hill High School, we have South Hill Private School, South Hill Academy, okay? And we have West Covina Unified, uh, West Covina High School, would you please raise your hand? Okay, West Covina, oh, yes, right here. Are you the teacher, right? Principal, oh, you want to say something, come? Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Charles Park Principal, West Covina High School, we're just really proud of our students, and it's really nice to hear from their experience, but also all the schools coming together on a day like this, and I think they're going to learn from it, and it's going to teach them skills beyond today and for their life, so thank you so much for this experience.
Thank you so much, Principal. You, you, you look so young, I would assume you are the student, okay? Yeah. Okay, are you gonna? Okay, okay, go ahead. Mayor.
Karidme Gonzalez.
Otherwise, we never end.
Mackenzie Wilson.
Congratulations, thank you so much.
Eric, Eric Palices. Lea Lopez. Anthony and.
And Dino.
And Dino.
That's it for this school. You want to do one school at a time?
Uh, okay, fine, so all the high school, let's have picture together. So this is South Hill High School?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor, you want to come in? Two of you still have to stay, we still have to keep up more. Next one will be South Hill Academy.
Jeremiah Medina. Valerie Velasco. Faith Rojas. Kayla Grimald. Amber de Santiago.
And, yeah, Mayor, it is the South Hill Academy. Good job, okay? Thank you, South Hill Academy. Okay, and then we go to the.
Gloria Michelle Ortiz. Lillian Shokri. Matthew Chavez.
Matthew.
Valerie Velasco.
Oh, oh, Principal, Principal here? Oh. Principal? Have to be fair.
I just want to get, ask, or I want to thank the City of West Covina and everyone on council for having my kids today, and for giving them such a great opportunity to be able to participate. I know that they got a lot out of it, and they were very excited to be here, so it was great to get to hear a little bit about their day-to-day. It's a little sad that they cut so much out of the Police Department budget, but we'll, we'll talk about that later.
Thank you.
West Covina High School. Irene Cruz. Isabella Orantes. Alejandro Martinez. Mount SAC Early College Academy. Sofia Hernandez. Jasper Fermeleno. Adam Pagan.
Hi, everybody, good evening, Dr. Ryan McDonald, proud principal. I just want to thank everyone here for hosting this wonderful event, talking to my students later today, they just had a great time and learning about all the departments and how it all works, so, a great day of lifelong learning, so thank you for hosting our event.
Can we have all students come up, please?
And the principal too? So, before you go home, we have a group picture. Maybe somebody, somebody can be in the front, a little bit, yeah, yeah. Thank you so much, okay, government, Student Government Day, okay, great job. Mayor, you want to do a conclusion before we send them home?
Thank you for everybody who came out today and came for this late meeting. I think it was a great pleasure that everybody was able to experience this, and I hope you all learned something from it and enjoyed coming.
Great job, Mayor, okay? Thank you so much. You, you can see, now she's our new mayor, okay? I, I think I get kicked out, because she's doing a pretty good job, okay? Thank you so much for all the students, I think that you learned a lot, how to cut two million dollar budgets, very difficult. So we, our job is, let's make two million dollar more, so we can pay for our expenditure, but thank you so much. And thank you, student, thank you so much for come, okay, I see you next year. Okay, thank you so much, appreciate, okay? Thank you, Mayor. Okay, thank you, City Clerk. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, okay? I see you guys next year. Yeah, good job, great job. Okay, we still have a lot of event, okay? We have a spring festival coming up, and you welcome to be our intern, okay? Internship is a great thing for you guys to step in the government, okay? Next one, we want to, okay, and have Pearl and Tim come up, okay? Japanese Cultural Center, maybe a lot of people don't know, we have almost a hundred years history of a Japanese community center, East San Gabriel Valley, okay, Japanese Cultural Center, and they established in nineteen thirty-six, and for the donation from one of the Japanese farmer, okay? And they donate the poverty, okay? And they establish about this, at the, when they roll, if you guys have been there, go to business stand, it's a beautiful Japanese cultural center or community center, have all. Have all provide their culture, education, and community service. They're doing great job. So I want to thank the principal, Tim, and our Pearl, okay, served 20 years in the community. I think you do it for free, right? She say, "Ha, ha, 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 not a chance." Okay, but let's President Tim say something about this outstanding community, okay, facility in our city for almost 100 years. Once upon a time, if you don't know, West Covina was a farm land. We have a lot of farmer. And a lot of farmer, okay, they are Japanese farmer, Japanese American, and they established over here. But 1942, during World War II, they've been removed from the community, and hopefully, okay, after war is over, a lot didn't come back. But we still have a couple of, okay, facility and lab present the proud of their, the pride of their community, of their culture. So, Tim, the president, you want to say something?
Great. Thank you, Tony. I wanted to let everybody know Pearl Omea has been our executive director for 20 years in a nonprofit organization like us. That's very rare. That doesn't happen, so that just shows you her dedication. So we're really appreciative of that. We're even, as we enter our 75th year next year, and the city has just celebrated 102nd year, we feel like we've been partners for so many years. But we still feel that we're, we are the young kids to the West Covina city. So we always appreciate it. All the cooperation, all the council members, and all the city managers and assistant city managers always support us. So we are very fortunate, and so that's why coming here tonight and acknowledging that Pearl's has spent 20 years with the, with the center is even more special. So thank you very much.
20 years is a long time, okay, and I think you have a lot of things you want to say to Tim, okay, and all the community. Go ahead, Pearl.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Wu. I think Tim said it all. We are very grateful to be part of the city of West Covina and to have the wonderful partnership with the city council and the city staff. We really truly appreciate, you know, being part of this community and being as much involved as we can, and to see, you know, our young people grow up here, learning and appreciating the Japanese culture is definitely our passion project, and we're like so thrilled that we can be part of this community. Thank you.
Maybe you can introduce quickly about your facility and invite maybe our resident to kind of visit your facility. Okay, I remember my daughter went to your facility, learned to, how to arrange the flower, even to Sinto religion. Try to, okay, explore, okay, about what you're offering. So maybe you want to share with the community?
Yes, I sent a video to Roxanne about the East San Gabriel Valley Japanese Community Center, because I'm sure you don't want to hear any more speeches from us. So one of our staff a few years ago made this beautiful video, and I would love to share with all of you.
Welcome to the East San Gabriel Valley Japanese Community Center, a cultural and community organization dedicated to preserving the heritage unique to Japanese-American ancestry. With over 5,000 members and 30 different programs, the ESGVJCC serves families across the San Gabriel Valley, including Los Angeles, Orange, San Bernardino, and Riverside Counties.
The East San Gabriel Valley Japanese Community Center was founded in 1936 by Aichiro Machida, when he donated one acre of his farmland, and he really wanted to see a place where future generations could learn about the Japanese culture.
Thanks to Mr. Machida, we now have a thriving cultural and community center with a multitude of programs and services for people of all ages. Over the years, the ESGVJCC has grown tremendously, and today it is home to over 30 programs that keep the community center busy every day. These programs range from different categories, including culture, education, social, martial arts, and recreation. With support from our highly trained teachers and instructors, we have the capacity to provide quality programming to all the members of our community. The ESGVJCC has always provided a space for people of all ages to visit and attend cultural events and programs. From toddlers to youth, adults, and seniors, there is always something for everyone to participate in.
We really look at what the community needs, what our Japanese community needs, and how we can fill those gaps. One of the exciting programs that we're doing now is our Camp Chibiko Youth Cultural Camp for ages 5 to 12. And it really gives the next generation some ownership of their heritage, their culture, and their community. Another thing that we do is we really try to engage our community in our Japanese culture. So we're reviving programs like Bonsai, Ikewana, Kimikomi Doll Class. These are programs that are offered not everywhere, and it's really special that we get to do that here and really foster and encourage people to learn about the Japanese culture, our language, and our community.
In addition to programs, the ESGVJCC also hosts over a dozen events that take place year-round. These events allow us to preserve the growth of Japanese-American heritage and showcase its beauty to the surrounding communities. Whether it is our seasonal festivals, annual health fair, enormous fundraisers, or holiday events, the ESGVJCC is a great place to stop by and enjoy quality time with the entire family.
We have grown so much in the last 10 years, and this is an opportunity for anyone, any family, to really be part of a special community, a community that is always welcoming to anyone and everyone, a great place for children to grow up, a great place for seniors to enjoy twilight years. But it's just a place where people come together and feel community.
The ESGVJCC is a place that is open for all to experience, celebrate, and be inspired by the beauty and joy of Japanese-American ancestry.
So the ESGVJCC bridges culture, family, and community, and we want you to be a part of that community and part of our family.
To learn more about all that the East San Gabriel Valley Japanese Community Center has to offer, visit our website at esgvjcc.org. We are looking forward to your next visit.
Yep, okay, thank you. Okay, and wonderful your facility and provide the service for, okay, and our community. Hopefully, a lot of our resident can visit your center, and here, I know you, you guys not only just finished the installation and provide very, okay, delicious dinner, but you are going to host, okay, the Cherry Blossom event. See, I didn't forget. Okay, so this is my 10th year attending your event, and then you have a summertime, you have another...
Yeah, the student exchange program is this summer, and so we're looking, you know, this is the sister city, West Covina sister city is Otohara, Japan, and it's a great relationship. I think it's going on 20 years now, so... 2012, so 22, 23 years, 23 years that we have been bridging, you know, the two cities together and doing cultural exchange for children or students that are 12 to 18 years old. So are you gonna come, are you coming to Japan this summer?
Okay, I don't know. My resident will allow me to go. Okay, so I promised them to finish a lot of project this year, and we will see possible, okay, time so tight. And I need to deliver my promise and all the city council too, and we need to finish and serve our city. So, but, but I think the important thing is that this, last year, we have a Japanese exchange student and come to our city and live in some host family, okay, and we want have our children and to visit Otohara, our sister city, to, okay, have a couple weeks about their culture. So it's been going on for a long time, 20 years. So, so we want to continue to have this program for so-called exchange student, and hopefully, and we just recently, last week, we have a Taiwanese student from South Hill Academy, okay, came to the city hall to, to visit and to have a tour and same thing about, about how the government run. So here, I want to thank, okay, your dedication, because last time we went to your installation, we didn't bring this to you. So that's why I invite you for your outstanding 20 years of service, and I want to thank you to show up today to give everybody, okay, a, a presentation regarding how wonderful your facility to serve our communities, but thank you so much.
Yes.
Tim, you want to add on anything?
No.
Oh, you, you, okay. Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. I see you next event. Next event will be Cherry Blossom. In what day? April 26. Okay, who will be host? Plaza West Covina with Cherry Blossom. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, appreciate. The last, okay, presentation is we, I think we have a lot of virus, okay, flu going, going around, and West Covina Health, our health officer will do a presentation, how to keep our residents safe, especially in this time. A lot of people sick, and our people even in the hospital, so we want to make sure, okay, our, our West Covina Health, the health director, health officer, to give us some quick breath and how keep our resident, okay, out of virus, out of sickness, and they can prevent and with some of your suggestion. Okay, go ahead.
All right, thank you, mayors and city councils members. I'll try to do this in about 10 minutes. Actually, tomorrow evening, we'll be co-hosting a community, a continuing medical education for the community physician and nurses, and also a community health partners for about four hours, 5:30 until 9:30. So anyway... So we'll be basically covering the respiratory illnesses data. So what to know? CDC and CDPH as of February 14, 2025, the amount of acute respiratory illness causing people to seek healthcare is at the high level. Seasonal influenza activity is higher than it has been all seasons. COVID-19 activity is elevated in many areas of the country and also in Los Angeles County. RSV activity is trending up again in most area of the country and remaining high. On December 18, 2024, Governor Nielsen has declared a public health emergency because of bird flu in California. So as you can see in this graph, unfortunately, it's a return of the so-called triple pandemic. We have flu, we have COVID, and we have RSV all at the same time. And as of February, flu, actually, death from flu has surpassed COVID first time in the last two years, and actually during the whole pandemics. So in California, expert is predicting flu is picking in the month of February, and it's going to remain high in California comparing to the US, and it might be persist through March before trending down. As I say, first time death from the flu has surpassed COVID this seasons. COVID-19 cases are trending up again but remain low comparing to during the pandemics. The XEC is now dominant strain at 45%, and the KP3.1.1 is declining, which is dominant at 24% at this time. The new variant is emerging is LP8.1 at 8%, and RSV cases is trending up and is remaining high. But there is still time for the flu, RSV, and COVID vaccination to get the protection that we need. So now, unfortunately, we also beside triple pandemic now is called quad pandemic, because what happens is the norovirus is making up the quad pandemic, and both are simultaneously happening in UK and the US. Quad pandemic is basically including the flu, COVID, RSV, and the norovirus. CDC reported usually there's about 2,500 cases of norovirus outbreak in the United States, and the highest level is during the early December of the year since 2012. CDC also recently reported norovirus is raging across US, now higher than any previous years. The cases increased by something like 340% in the past four months. For norovirus, what can we do for preventing strategy is wash our hands with soap. Hand sanitizer or alcohol alone do not work well against norovirus. We have to prepare the food safely. Norovirus can survive up to 140 degrees Fahrenheit. And also we have to disinfect the surface using chlorine bleach solution with a concentration of 1,000 to 5,000 part per million. And avoid touching the face, including eye, nose, and mouth. Also wash our laundry well, and as soon as possible to avoid the spread. Preventing strategy for flu, RSV, COVID is pretty much the same, but there is still time, as I say, for vaccination and build up enough immunity to last through maybe March and April. Wash hand frequently with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. Practice good respiratory hygiene, including cover our mouth and nose with tissues or your elbow with coughing or sneezing, and dispose the tissues palmly and properly. Avoid touching the face, as I say earlier, and improve ventilation, and wear appropriate mask or cover in a crowded and close space, especially in the peak flu, RSV, and COVID season or in the area of high transmissions. For RSV, stay home when sick. Also maintain a healthy lifestyle. The well-balanced diet consists of rainbow color fruits and vegetable. Stay hydrated and get regular exercise. Ensure adequate sleep to support your immune system. I will take proper dose and type of vitamin supplement, including vitamin D3, vitamin C, zinc, and vitamin B complex, etc. Also, it would be good to do deep breathing exercise with fresh air and exposed to sunlight daily. We probably don't want to burn our skin and maintain a very good positive attitude. For treatment strategy, same thing, stay home, stay hydrated, eat a light nutritious food, then relieve the symptom with some of the over-the-counter medications. Use humidifier, gargle the throat with salt water, and perform so-called nasal saline rings. Actually, this will also a good strategy in case you're in a big crowded area and return home. The virus usually won't invade the body for two, three hours, so as soon as you get home, just saline solution, the rings that no and gargle through will help reduce the amount of virus exposure. But if you experience any severe symptoms, such as difficulty breathing, chest pain, sudden seizures, confusion, persisting vomiting, or the symptom get better and return, so-called rebounds, make sure to ask for medical help. And make sure to check the oxygen level with a pulse oximeter and call your PCP if your oxygen level is less than 94%. And with patient with high risk and also patient with over 65, should consult the primary care. A lot of time when you have first symptom of flu, Tamiflu, work very well within 24 hours. Paxil also work very well. The sooner you take either one of those, you can get rid of those flu and COVID symptom. And there's also many other antiviral medications. For RSV is a very common virus that can cause respiratory infection, especially in infant, children, and older adult over 65. RSV is can be serious, so proactive measure and close monitoring is the key. Otherwise, the treatment is pretty much similar to flu and COVID-19. But if the symptom get worse, make sure to consult the doctor and your primary care doctor, because hospitalization may be necessary. In cases, they do have some medication for infant and childrens. Bird flu, the current risk to the public remain low. Recently, New York City have to close several life market to stop the spread of the bird flu. No person-to-person spread of bird flu has been detected in California. People rarely get bird flu, but those who interact with infected dairy, cows, poultry, or wildlife have a greater risk of infection. Pasteurized meal and dairy product are safe to consume. Pasteurization in activate the birth of... Uh, pasteurization in activate the birth of, uh, flu virus. Both CDC and CDPH are working to protect public health related to bird flu. They monitor the infection data, evolving signs and the pay, uh, people affected, the knowledge will change as we, uh, learn more and they are committed to reduce the impact to everybody involved, especially the high-risk people. Uh, other respiratory virus worth mentioning, um, is rhinovirus, uh, which is a common cold, enterovirus, uh, adenovirus, uh, PR, PIV2, human parainvulnus virus 2, PIV3. Uh, those are the one that can cause croup and bronchiolitis and pneumonia. Uh, one very interesting is also MPV, human metanymovirus, which typically cause some of this cold-like symptom. But especially concern is the, um, so-called human metanymovirus, M, the HMPV. Uh, CDC have reported the case has been rising since November with about 2% weekly test positive as of February 8, 2025. Los Angeles County Department of Public Health also reporting about the same percentage. Uh, in December, uh, mid-December last year, a large spike of cases in China, uh, with people lining up in the hospital and clinic, uh, looking for, uh, seeking for medical help. The symptom including cough, fever, nasal congestion and shortness of breath and requiring hospitalizations. So this is something that the CDC and CDPH will be probably watching and monitoring. Uh, this, uh, end my, my conclusion of my report and thank you for your attention and any questions?
Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Bezo is very informative because I know a lot of people worry about the flu going on, especially east coast. So any city council have any question? Okay, and, uh, no, none, okay? But thank you so much for the information and, uh, we want our resident in West Covina safe, okay? This is important. And then thank you for our health director to provide the information for our resident. Thank you so much. Okay. Uh, okay, now we have our, um, council member Gutierrez.
Yes, I have one question for Dr. Bezo. Okay. Dr. Bezo, what do you recommend to, uh, uh, employers and, um, uh, or government facilities or even private employers? If a staff member is sick, uh, what protocols should be taken? Uh, I know, I know in the federal government, we have a lot of different protocols, uh, that they take to make sure there's precautions, uh, maybe take the, see if you could take the day off not to expose others to the flu. So what recommendations do you have for the community?
Well, actually, any communicative disease, if there's any question or any symptom, they should really stay home. And nowadays, especially you can work remotely. You know, a lot of time, uh, some of these work, job function can be worked remotely and we should utilize that, uh, uh, strategy to avoid, uh, spreading the infections. And then of course, besides that, uh, it would be nice, actually, a lot of times, um, a lot of patient have flu and COVID. Right now is, uh, the, uh, this test available in the market in term of cost 13, $15, you can check for both flu and COVID. Because with flu, a lot of time, if you have the first sign of symptom, you take it even one dose of Tamiflu or some of this antiviral medication, by the next day you feel so much better and you shorten the recovery cost and then of course, less disability and back to work soon.
Great, thank you.
So isolation, I think is the key.
Okay, thank, thank you so much, great job. Okay, now we move to oral communication. Okay, we will now move to oral communication. The time to speak has been changed to three minutes. Okay, cursing, swearing, swearing and discriminatory, uh, discriminatory speech will not be allowed. When you hear your name being called, please start lining up in the center row and the time will start when you reach the podium. Okay, and request to speak on agenda item will be heard prior to request to speak on the non-agenda item. Okay, so right now, and how many speaker we have?
We have seven speakers, mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Am I only accepting them when they turn them in? Did you want to?
Yes, yes, yeah, I, we mentioned this at the beginning of the study with the, the new mayor.
Under, thank you. Our first speaker is Albert Ochoa, followed by Douglas Four, followed by Joanna G.
City mayor, city council, city manager, city staff, Albert Ochoa, West Covina resident. Uh, I'm here on agenda item three. Um, I'm here to speak on that, in favor of traffic committee recommendations. Uh, we appreciate the work the city officials are doing to improve our, our, and restore our streets, uh, really looking forward to that. Uh, thank you for your time and attention, appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Douglas Four, followed by Joanna G, followed by Bill Elliott.
Hello guys, my name is Doug Four, I live in this awesome city, have three businesses in the city. At the previous council meeting, I brought up a safety concern regarding local businesses in the historic downtown area on Glendora Avenue. It was suggested that businesses contribute for their own security to prevent crime. I would like to state the contributions that I have done to upgrade the historic downtown area. I have spent over $150,000 remodeling and creating Bun Street, another $50,000 extending the restaurant from which was a massage parlor that kept getting in trouble for bad things happening. I then spent $100,000 remodeling a unit to make a family ice cream parlor from what was previously a smoke shop that was selling marijuana. I also then spent another $100,000 on a third unit remodeling it and developing a bakery and a restaurant. I feel that myself and other owners of the historic downtown area are already heavily invested in the development of downtown. When asking the council and city management to allow for outside dining that I was willing to pay for to make the place better out there, um, I received no support. In fact, it was the opposite. We were informed that the property was on the city land and that are right outside our entrance and that the city was investigating ways to charge us for fees for the dining that had been currently taking place outside for the last 40-plus years. I have an email today to pass out showing you guys that from city employee. As business owners, we have been thankful the last two weeks they've been doing bike patrol. Um, it has helped, um, with customers feeling safer down there. Um, the problems that we're having is in the middle of the night, once a bar is closed till about six in the morning. The liquor store got, had it attempted break in at about four in the morning two nights ago. All the businesses already heavily invested. I'm just asking for a little support. In regard to health department at the presentation tonight, I'm particularly interested in the funding that will drive from the agency as when the past fire chief mentioned grants as an option, he was fired the next day. Thank you very much.
Uh, next speaker, please.
Joanna G, followed by Bill Elliott, followed by Sherri Fisher.
Good evening, mayor, sitting council member, city manager and staff and members of the community. Joanna G from West Covina Library, some up and coming programs that we have this Saturday. We have our Play and Explore Program for little kids and that's on Saturday at 10:15 AM. We have Learn Latin Dance with Adrian Bane and that's going to be on Saturday as well at 2 PM. This is for adults. Uh, we have African American and Black History Month, Brotherhood of Sleeping Car Reporters, and this is on Tuesday, February 25th at 2 PM. And last but not least, we have our chess tournament on Saturday, March 1st at 10:30 AM for all ages. And for the rest of our regular scheduled programs, they will be on our West Covina Library website at LA County Library.org. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joanne. Okay, and, uh, next speaker, please.
Bill Elliott, followed by Sherri Fisher, followed by Mario.
Good evening, city council. I just want to express to you how privileged I feel to live in a place like West Covina. You know, uh, this city has so many positive things about it that sometimes we just tend to take for granted. And this is a great town and we're surrounded by suburbia and West Covina is right in the middle of it. We truly are the jewel of the San Diego Valley. And I'm proud to say I'm from West Covina and I'm happy I'm a homeowner here and, uh, it was a great choice for us. And I was looking at Zillow today and gosh, there are some beautiful homes for sale in West Covina. And, uh, so another thing I wanted to say is that in light of recent events, uh, I think it's completely appropriate for the city council to consider establishing a new department within the city. The Department of Waste Management, Government Excess, like DOGE, I think it would be really beneficial because there isn't a government entity out there that isn't wasting money somehow. Sometimes money, uh, comes into the city and goes out so fast, we're not so sure what's even happening with it. But I'm sure if an enterprising young individual, you know, that had some, uh, tech background, you know, Councilman Gutierrez might know somebody like that, that could come in and just open the books, crack open the books and look for waste. How can that be a bad thing? You know, we're not to, out to get anybody. Of course, if we find malfeasance or criminal activity, it has to be addressed. And I know that in the past, you know, we've changed city managers, you know, one city manager goes out and another city manager comes in, there's all kinds of sabotage that goes on with the old city manager. And, uh, you know, knowing where the bodies are buried really, uh, kind of frames the, the narrative on saving money and avoiding fraud. And I would really like to see the city council discuss this earnestly because there's no reason not to. And I'll bet you, if you move forward with a local DOGE, you'd find some waste and some abuse and hopefully not any fraud, but maybe. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, next speaker, please.
Sherri Fisher, followed by Mario, followed by R. Robinson.
Hands up.
Good evening, mayor and, um, council members. Um, I'm pleased to share with you, um, the developments at Merrill Gardens, um, community. This month, we welcomed four new residents to Merrill Gardens that were part of the Altadena Fires. Uh, Mayor Wu and Councilman Gutierrez, uh, met with the families and welcomed them to our great city. Um, I'm, I'm pleased to share with you that Merrill Gardens is 99% occupied. We have one available apartment. Um, why am I sharing this? Because one of the recent council meetings, I learned and I was disappointed that somebody came up here and, and said disparaging things about Merrill Gardens. When my residents learned about this, they were mad and they wanted me to come and speak. They wanted me to educate the community about Merrill Gardens and their home. The basic knowledge of what goes on at Merrill Gardens. Uh, Merrill Gardens residents are thriving. We employ 60-plus people from the West Covina area and neighboring cities. We have 112 residents, thriving. Our building is just four years old and as the ma, the manager, I'm proud of our success. Our success is collaboration with the fire department and the police department. Our community has established a strong, um, partnership with the police and the fire departments to ensure the safety and well-being of our residents. Regular training sessions happen with the fire department. We're in coordination with the police department, um, for all emergencies. The, we, we do drills and tests with both the fire department, mainly the fire department and the police department to ensure we have proper evacuation and, and safety primarily, um, ensuring that our residents are ready for an emergency. City support has been instrumental in providing support and resources to help us maintain an environment that's healthy for our residents. This includes working really closely with city staff and the Cortez Senior Center and, and Community Center. Uh, we collaborate on activities and do fun stuff. In the light of the emergencies, um, we have a, we have a comprehensive plan. We welcome and open our community to local service clubs, including the Kiwanis, the Lions Club, West Covina Beautiful and the Boy Scouts. We are committed to continuing the collaboration with the community at the highest level of care and safety for our residents. Thank you for the time and allowing me to share this. Um, we appreciate the continued support.
Thank you, Sherri. And next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Mario Sobavaro, followed by R. Robinson.
All right, uh, good evening, council members of the community. I want to start by thanking Councilman Ole Cantos for being the only council member in attendance at the West Covina Residents Take Our Neighborhood Back meeting, which took place last Wednesday, February 12th at Hurst Ranch. Also want to thank Chief Cortina, Acting Chief Brown, Lieutenant Armus and Lieutenant Freeman for showing up and engaging with the community. Also a special thank you to Matt Smith and Doug Foray, owners of Bun Street, who generously donated the delicious food for the meeting. Their contribution not only made the evening and even, made the evening even better, but also showed their dedication to supporting the local community. Even with the rainy weather, over 60 residents showed up because they care about their community. Unfortunately, the same can't be said for Mayor Tony Wu, Councilwoman Diado, Councilman Gutierrez, Councilman Diaz, or, uh, yes, Councilwoman Diaz, uh, or any city staff who are all noticeably absent. Uh, Mayor Wu, you declared 2025 the year of action, a year of transparency and community engagement, but how does that statement hold up when only one of five council members could be bothered to attend a meeting with the very community they claim to serve? As Seneca, the younger one said, "A wise man never asks what another man serves, for only his actions will speak the truth." And the actions, or rather the inaction of this council tells us everything we need to know. On a separate note, glad to see Councilwoman Diaz here tonight, looking healthy. I fully expect to see her again tomorrow, 10:30 AM at courthouse for restraining order hearing. Last time she had a court date, she was too sick to attend and even provided a doctor's note, but then just a few hours later, she was here at the council meeting not looking sick at all. Let's hope she doesn't suddenly fall ill again before tomorrow's hearing. On the topic of transparency, the December 5th, 2024 special meeting raises serious concerns. Public records requests have revealed no documentation of who initiated it, no proof that a majority of the council approved it, no written notification to all council members as required by law. Only two council members, Ole Cantos and Brian Tabatabai, received email notifications. That means either three council members were left in the dark or a backroom deal was made to schedule it. Neither scenario is acceptable and that's why I've submitted a cure and correct demand letter regarding Brown Act violations. 30 seconds. I've printed out copies of cure and correct demand letter regarding violations of the Brown Act related to December 5th, 2024 meeting. I've also mailed out three, uh, copies certified mail to City of West Covina, one to the state attorney and one to a compliance advocacy group. After extensive research and many, many public records requests, it is clear that the violations cited are valid and demand corrective action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mario. Uh, next speaker, please. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, DOGE and Student Government Day was mentioned earlier in the meeting. It's kind of a, a dicey situation when, uh, government departments are audited. I, I heard a prediction today that, uh, in four years, the Democratic Party might not exist because all those no, uh, those nonprofit honeypots are being discovered and they won't have any, they're going to lose the midterm election in two years and fade out of existence because their methods of, uh, gathering money, campaign money have been discovered and the, the party can't sustain itself, uh, for maybe four more years. Uh, I have two, two, uh, items tonight for the council. Uh, a book was published today, uh, by, uh, Dr. James Thorpe and co-author is Cecilia Farber. Uh, Sacrifice 2024, How The Vaccine Has Historically Targeted The Most Vulnerable And Hasn't Been Taken Off The Market Yet. Uh, it's still emergency use authorized and it's, it's not safe and effective. And how Medicare's Prep Act has given protection from liability for, uh, all the... And how Medicare's PREP Act has given protection from liability for all the covered persons. This book shows, and the data shows, that the vaccine must have the emergency youth authorization revoked. It's dangerous, and it's killing people, and the data is... In my last minute, there's a Northern California tech billionaire named Steve Kirsch. He has produced these bulletproof arguments that the COVID vaccine has no benefit. The variables that is proving, and the data that he's using, is an epidemiological variable called R naught. And that study of that data shows the vaccine killed people. And also, there's an IFR, or case fatality rate, and infection fatality rate, which has doubled. And the data shows, and Steve Kirsch is backing up his argument, he's willing to give any doctor or scientist in West Covina a million dollars if they shake the article that he's produced. It's a bulletproof argument.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
See you next time. Okay, and the next speaker, please.
No further speakers.
Okay. City manager, do you have any response to the speaker?
I do. Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's great to hear that there's been huge investment by some of the business owners in the downtown area in revitalizing the downtown area, investing and opening up businesses. So thank you, Doug, for picking West Covina and coming to West Covina. I'm also glad to hear that there's been a positive impact with our PD's Bike Patrol on Glendora Avenue in helping secure or make the area safe for our residents and patrons. And then Johanna, for the update on the library. So thank you for coming and providing those updates. It's always great to hear from residents that are happy. So thanks to Bill Elliott for coming in and sharing some positive thoughts about our community. It's also great to hear from Sherry that we're at 99% occupancy at Merrill Gardens. Sherry and Merrill Gardens has been a great partner with the city, and it is a marvelous facility for our residents at their later years to enjoy. So it does bring a nice amenity to West Covina. And then to Mario, thank you for the update. It is definitely encouraging to see residents taking such an active role in organizing and hosting these types of meetings, the community meetings. So thank you for the update, and I think that concludes my comments.
Okay. Thank you, city manager. Now we move to consent calendar. Any city council want to pull any item?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Gutierrez.
Oh, sorry, Mayor, unless you don't want a city manager's report.
I just want to move. Go ahead. Okay, I forgot you have a city manager report. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
My bad.
First, I'll go through it really quickly. Just, we are starting that season again, so we have the budget survey up. It's available until the 26th, so the time is coming to an end to participate and give us feedback on the priorities for spending or for the budget process this year. Next, if you started driving around town, you'll see that this weekly street signage has been, started being installed as of this Monday. It will be completed within the next 50 days. Enforcement of the posted sign restrictions will start in mid-April. So while the signs are going up, enforcement of those weekly street sweeping signs will not occur until mid-April. We will also be notifying residents when that exact date will begin. In the process of updating the website, we have a website redesign, redesign survey. We encourage our residents to participate in this. It will give us feedback to help make our new website that we are hoping to launch this summer more accessible to our residents and easier for you to get to the information that you want to get to on the website. Tomorrow is the homeless count, the Los Angeles County Homeless Count. The meeting will be held at Cameron Park Community Center from 6:00 p.m. to midnight. There's a volunteer opportunity, so if anyone would like to participate in the homeless count, please sign up through the county website. Just as an update on, the Measure A funds are going to be distributed to cities based on the point-in-time counts, or the point-in-time counts are going to have a heavy influence on the funding that each city gets. And so it's going to be very important that we get accurate information for our homeless I think Mr. Cho spoke to this. Part of the agenda item tonight is the truck routes updates. We are, they are reviewing the locations, the current locations for truck routes along Glendora, Lakes, Walnut, and West Covina Parkway. Once the review is complete and ordinance will be brought before the city council for consideration of updating the city's truck routes in the municipal code, and then we'll be able to post signs and make those changes. So just wanted to share, the photo, or the image up there is the existing truck routes that are approved by the municipal code. We have some good news. I don't know if any of you guys are familiar with Texas Roadhouse. We are moving forward with relocating them to West Covina. It'll be where the former CPK property, or CPK restaurant was, or Chevy's back in the day, next to Jamba Juice. So we've started, council authorized execution of an exclusive negotiation agreement, and now we're moving forward with a purchase and sale agreement. There are some items or tasks that we will have to complete, including the subdivision of the property to make the sale complete, and then for the restaurant to move forward and start construction and get it open. And then as far as upcoming events, once again, the Spring Festival next month, that we are fast approaching, our annual Spring Festival. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much, city manager. Now we move to, okay, consent calendar. City council want to move?
I have some items.
On the pool, okay? You have which one?
Number six and seven.
Okay, and number three. So three, six, seven, and the rest, who want to move the motion?
Move the motion.
Okay, who's second? Okay?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Diaz and a second by Councilmember Gutierrez to approve consent calendar items, one through eight, with the exception of number three, six, and seven. Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez-Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye. Okay, motion approved, and we move to the item number three. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question, or I guess I want clarification for the item regarding Walnut Creek Parkway from Azusa Avenue to Citrus. It would be the first one, number one, that says install 25-inch pavement legend adjacent to the existing 25 mile per hour speed limit signs along Walnut Creek Parkway for eastbound and westbound traffic along the segment of Walnut Creek Parkway from Hollenback Avenue to Azusa Avenue. I just wanted to know, what does that look like? If you have a picture of that, or?
If I can have Roberto DeGarcia, P. project manager, or Brian Servante, or Jana Robbins from John's, to answer that question.
Hi. Good evening, council. Mayor? Okay, so you're asking the 25 pavement legend. So right now, existing, there is a, I'm looking at the wrong one. Sorry.
From the city manager's report?
Yeah. Walnut Creek, right? Okay, so going westbound, make sure I get it right. There isn't existing 25 mile per hour speed limit sign. So normally, if we want to have people really notice what the speed limit is, we put the pavement legend, which is the big 25, adjacent to the sign.
I see.
So there'll be one on westbound, and then also on eastbound. This way, if there's a tree, there's a parked car, there's no reason you don't see the speed limit.
Which is a problem there.
Right.
Okay. And what measure would that be? Because I know we go through several measures before we can get to what my ultimate goal would be, is my speed bumps.
Right. This is kind of the level two. We're going to try this first, and then, you know, we give it a little time, we do a reassessment, and then if it's still not working, then we move to the more, you know, the more extreme item like the speed bump.
Okay. The other item, and I'm not sure what you call it, but it's a traffic, monitors the traffic.
Yeah, your speed signs?
Yes. I know they were going to install one of the trailers there, and I was wondering what the status on that was.
Yeah, what we do is we submit to the police department, because they're the ones in charge of the speed trailer, the mobile trailer. And then they try to have one of their cadets or whoever's available put the trailer there. So we give them a list of the, the wanted list of the speed trailer, so we'll have to check with them to see how we're coming.
Okay. Okay. I'm done with that one now. Okay, no, I'm okay with the truck routes. That's it.
Anything, anything else?
No.
Also, okay, Councilmember Gutierrez, go ahead.
Yeah. Do we know who will be putting up the signs for a lot of these projects?
That's up to city staff to determine. Once it's approved, then either it would be if Public Works has the ability and the time to do it, or it would go as one of the contracts that go out.
Okay. So I think in order to save money, we should probably have Public Works do it, right, Paulina?
So if I may, the approval tonight is to approve the recommendations. It's not approving a budget for the projects.
I know. I'm just making sure we're saving money.
So when we, when we look at what public work staff can complete in-house opposed to going to, we can do that.
I support these projects, so I want, I'm just saying, making a statement that hopefully we're using our own public works to save money, so. Great.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion to approve? Oh, go ahead, Councilwoman Diaz.
So once we've approved this, so is there any estimated time as to how long it would take for them to actually get these things done?
So I forget off the top of my head how much we budget annually, but there's an annual budget line item in the budget for these types of improvements. And so once that money's expended for the year, we have to wait until the following year, and then sometimes there's a backlog. And so as soon as we are able to go out to bid or have the public work staff complete these projects, we move forward with those projects. So we usually do one round of projects once a year.
Because I'm really concerned about the truck routes because of the problems that we've had on Garvey Avenue.
We will have, that'll be done a little bit differently because that will have to come back to the council as we will need to update the municipal code through an ordinance. So we won't have to wait for, for that to be included as part of that approval. We can bring that separately.
So are we talking this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Any city council? Okay, go ahead, city council.
Yeah, just to go off Councilwoman Diaz's question. So do we know when that staff report we brought back in March, in the second meeting of March, or April?
Jana, do you have a timeframe we can?
Yeah, we're going to have the update within a couple of weeks, so then we'll have to do the staff report, work with city staff, and have that back, because there's a, you know, we have a three-week, three-week time period that you have to have the report to make it to council. So it may be early April, just because of the time.
Yeah, I was thinking early April, or second, no later than the second meeting of April.
Yeah, probably.
And yeah, and then we have to make sure we do the ordinance.
Right.
Yeah.
Because you have to write that, and then it has to go to legal, I think, and then, you know. So we are, it is on our list.
So city council, any other? No. I just want to piggyback. I think regarding the truck route, okay, I think the sign need to be posted. Okay, no truck allowed, but we need a police department to enforce, to give ticket for big truck driving around. We have a big truck driving all the places in our city and create nuisance to our resident. I think we need to enforce and plus damage our street. A lot of the street has just repaid, okay, and now a bit damaged by the big, big 16-wheeler. So I think this is a signage need to be closed. At the same time, okay, the police, traffic, and enforcement need to be there. Okay, and do I have a motion to approve?
Move the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
The motion by Councilwoman Diaz, a second by Councilmember Gutierrez to approve consent calendar item number three, which is consideration of approval of traffic recommendations from the traffic committee meetings between November 2024 through January 2025. Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez-Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, and motion approved, 5-0. Okay, and next item will be number six. Councilmember Gutierrez, go ahead.
Yes. So I'm going over attachment number one. City of West Covina contracts and purchase orders issued under Section 2-337 and 2-356 in the municipal code, which is the city manager's authority. I would like for the city manager to please explain the purchase from Diversify Leasing for a new 2025 Honda Odyssey EXL, a new 2025 Honda Pilot EXL, one charge of $49,026, another charge of $52,471 from Diversify Leasing, and explain why a local RFP was not done to allow local businesses to compete. And also, another, there's a couple of them. Another one from DWWCT LLC, a 2023 Nissan Altima SL for $24,768. Sorry, there's another car one somewhere here.
You want the city manager to explain?
Oh, no, there we go. The National Auto Fleet, a new 2024 Ford F-150 Police Respo at $121,015, and a new 2025 Chevrolet Traxx, four-wheel drive, $48,834. If you could please explain that, and why a local RFP was not done to allow local businesses to compete.
Go ahead, city manager.
So I'll start answering, and then I'll have our finance director, Stephanie Sigma, help fill in the gaps. So these are purchases that were done under the city manager's authority. We still have to comply with the purchasing policy, the city's purchasing policy. So if it's over a certain amount, we still have to do, either ask for three quotes or go through an RFP process. So this, being on this list does not negate it having gone through the proper purchasing policy procedures. And I believe that there was a couple vehicles, or questions about purchase of vehicles, and those were, I believe, done, or purchased for the police department. And then if you can add, Stephanie?
Do you have an explanation or anything you want to add on?
If I may add, the RFP or the procurement process also includes the opportunity for us to piggyback our use in our local agreement or cooperative agreement. So some of them may be purchased off cooperative agreements as well. As in terms of the actual procurement done for each of these, I would need to pull the requisition documentation and report back.
My understanding, this is now from our general fund, right? This is from forfeiture fund, the police department?
It could be from a multitude of funds. This doesn't signify, this listing doesn't tell you exactly what fund it's from. Most of PD vehicles are bought out of forfeiture funds, so if it's for PD, most likely it was out of that and not out of the general fund. But this list isn't by fund or by department even. It's just a simple listing of everything that has been authorized by the city manager.
So I'm kind of confused. So this is from forfeiture or this from general fund?
All of these purchases, it's all of the purchases made under the city manager's authority, so it does not exclude any, or includes all funds and revenues that we can expend from.
Blank check.
No, these are items that are budgeted in the... No, these are items that are budgeted in the...
So it's budgeted?
These are budgeted items. And so from the budget line items, these are expended from those. Some of them may be from forfeiture funds. They may be from special revenue funds. They may be from the general fund. The purpose of this listing is just to show you the types of transactions that the city manager has executed under her authority.
Got it, so basically this is already purchased, now we just reapply?
This is just an, this is a receive and file portion of it.
So basically we see and fire.
Second part of the agenda is an action item, and that's just to reject the two bids that were out and that council had previously asked.
So this already happened? So we just right now, just we see and fire?
Correct.
And so maybe in the future, we need to make sure, maybe, because last time we have a mother may I for five city council approve the shop local? Yeah, go ahead, okay, council member.
That's not what I was told by Paulina, our city manager. You told me that any item you bring here for city council's approval after the fact, we have the authority to reject the decision you exercise in purchasing that product. Now you're saying we don't have that authority, you're made to purchase?
These are purchases that were approved through the budget or through a budget amendment. So I don't have authority to purchase anything, even if it's in my threshold, unless it's part of the approved budget that the council adopts.
Yeah, but you gave us this report because we have the ability to reject off, we have the ability not to approve your, later on, approved the transaction.
No, these are already purchased items.
I want to add on, okay? Sorry to interrupt, but this happened in 2024 before you elected. So this is a prior, I think we approved on the budget. So and so maybe if you have a concern, we can lower the, okay, the amount the city manager can, under his authority. But this is already based on what the finance director is already approved by us and is purchased, we see and fire.
Yeah, no, I just want, yeah, absolutely. And then just to say that when the city manager mentions it's budgeted, she's, if I'm not mistaken, you're referring to the budget as a whole for that department that the council approved. So let's just say you approved a million dollars for IT. Under your authority, you could award contracts under that budgeted amount, up to $200,000 per transaction, correct?
Yes.
Per, yes, per transaction.
So it's not necess, it's up to 200,000 per transaction, but per vendor. So if I want to execute an agreement with a vendor that's 200,000 this year, another 200,000 next year, then I'm going to be violating the purchasing or purchasing authority because then it's over my authority. I can only authorize purchases that are part of the adopted budget. So I, there's no discretionary funds that I can spend.
Yeah.
I can, if there's a need and I can work with the finance director and relocate or reallocate funds within the adopted budget and come to council for the budget amendment, and that would require council approval. Or if I want to expend more funds than what's approved in the adopted budget, I would have to come to council.
Yeah, so in other words, if there's a million dollars in an account that's already been budgeted by the council, you could, per contract or per entity, you could award up to 200,000. So if you knew, but there's nothing in the code that prevents you on how many of those contracts. So if technically, if you wanted to spend a million dollars on various projects without the council's knowledge or approval or even having authority to review this or approve this, we're reviewing it now, but we don't have authority to reject it, then you have that authority as long as it's up no more than 200,000 per entity or contract.
So if there's a line item for a million dollars for IT, that usually has associated purchases or expenditures with that line item, whether it's for computers?
But I just want to make sure my council colleagues understand my question. So is it yes or no? Is my explanation correct?
Maybe finance director, you can answer, okay? So we don't have to continue to, this is already happened.
Yeah, yeah.
Change, we need to, mother may I to change?
Yeah, I'm going to move on after that question.
Would you please?
If I may, just to make sure I understand the question. If we had a million dollars, can she spend 200,000 from it to different projects to expend the whole million? Yes, she could to different projects.
Yes, okay.
Out of that million dollars that council has budgeted.
Thank you, thank you, okay. And then my last question is when is, I think we, I did a council request to bring back the budget amount allocated for that budget. When are you supposed to bring that back? Just sorry, no?
The next meeting?
Next meeting, okay, great, thank you. Okay, that's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you, council member, thank you. Okay, the finance director?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, now we have another question. Go ahead, okay, councilman Ollie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just think, listening to the sentiments that I think council member Gutierrez is reflecting, can the city manager verify if we, in light of our past sentiments to buy a local, that is there a documentation process to show that through the procurements that we have done, that we did everything that we could to buy a local without necessarily spending more than we otherwise would spend? So in other words, let's say we tried to buy a local, but a less expensive alternative is elsewhere, then at least we tried. But is there already a process to document that when we see these expenses, that there was indeed a process for each of those items for us preferably to buy local so that we could maximize using our funds for local businesses that are based here in West Covina?
Who want to answer this? Tough question, yeah.
I will try. So I don't have that section in the purchasing manual memorized, but I will say that a lot of grants don't allow you to necessarily seclude to local. So our policies aren't set up to exclude to local. However, staff does generally, if they're going to buy a widget, they're going to start within the city limits. There's nothing in our procedures or policies that says you checked local first, if that's what you're referring to.
So as a way to shore up that policy, would it be possible for us as a council to establish as a policy that we would go to local first and then, and then after that, proceed forward with looking for other possible entities from which to purchase?
I think that was a mother may I by Mayor Protem Lopez Viado.
We have left on the Mayor Protem Lopez Viado.
Okay.
Okay, and we already request, okay, the policy to shop local first. But I agree with the finance director, okay, some grant, they have a policy, they need to go to the national, okay? And then maybe exempt for shop local. We really want to shop local, but sometimes, like you say, okay, the grant maybe require some national, okay, and IP. So anyway, and do I have any other question? If not, do we need to vote on this?
Yes.
Yes, okay, do I have a motion to approve? Thank you so much, finance director. Yeah, thank you, okay. No, what do you pull?
You're voting, sorry, you're voting.
We see and fire.
Reject the two RFPs.
No, the number six, this is reject IP?
Yes.
Okay, okay, reject IP. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move the motion.
Do I have a second? Okay, roll call, please.
I have a motion by councilwoman Diaz, a second by mayor Protem Lopez Viado to approve Agenda Item Number Six, Consideration of Purchasing Report and Rejection of Unordered Bids and Requests for Proposals. Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, and a motion approved five zero. And we go to number seven. Council member?
Okay. Yeah, if you could, city staff could just briefly explain what this item is to the public?
This item is the quarterly financial report for the second quarter. And so it reflects all of the transactions that have occurred. And then there's a proposed budget amendment to, the main pieces are in there, that are in there, is to incorporate the transfers that were established from the corrective action plan following through to our financial policies that council also approved tonight. And then the CIP rollover annually, the city looks, or staff looks at open projects and rolls over the funding to the next year so that they can continue to be worked on. And those are the main items that are in the budget amendment associated with the quarterly financial.
Great, and so we're voting on a amendment to administration, city clerk, finance, fire, police, public works, and transfers, I think?
Yes.
Okay, what was the 30,000 for administration?
The 30,000 for administration is, this is all outlined in the quarterly report, but on page four, but it is to, it includes the $12,000 increase for council health insurance, $15,000 for new council chamber chairs, and $3,000 for staff over.
Great, and then the city clerk's office?
That is actually a proposed rollover from the prior year. Since it's not in capital projects, it's outlined separately since it's in the general fund. But this was part of the last portion of the municipal fee study.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Any other question? Otherwise, do I have a motion to receive and file, approve, okay, and follow, adopt the following resolution? Do I have a motion?
So move.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, roll call, please.
I have a motion by councilman Cantos, a second by councilwoman Diaz to approve Consent Calendar Item Number Seven, Consideration of the Second Year Financial Report and Budget Amendment for Fiscal Year 2024-25. Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, and a motion approved five zero. Now moving to public hearing, item number nine, Consideration of Ordinance Number 2525, call amendment number 24-01, okay, to amend chapter 26 of the West Covina Municipal Code to make correction and incorporate required update to comply with state law. And to amend the commercial portion of the Plan Community Development Number One, PCD-1, for the West Covina portion of Woodside Village to make development within the PCD-1 zoning consistent with the current zoning. Okay, and this is recommendation, do we have, okay, basically, we're going to open up the hearing. Okay, and at this time, okay, city clerk, okay, have you verified proper legal notice has been given?
Yes, mayor.
I find my script.
Yes.
I'm looking around, where's my script? Okay, why am I in my hand? Okay, assistant city clerk, okay, you verify. Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing on the project. There will first be the presentation of the staff report. Then we shall hear from those in favor of the project, or then those opposed. Okay, and city manager, who will present the staff report, please?
Mayor Joanne Burns, our deputy community development director, will be providing the presentation.
Joanne, go ahead.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council, and also members of the public. I'll go ahead and go over the development code update timeline and process. The development code update process started in 2021. Community meetings and subcommittee meetings were held. It was ultimately adopted by the city council in February 2024 and took effect in March 2024. When it was adopted, it was understood that we would go back to clean up certain items that didn't completely work or any, any oversights or mistakes that were found after the fact. Throughout the process, the city was also working with the state in updating the housing element. On September 18th, 2024, HCD sent the city a letter stating that the housing element certification is pending adoption of certain code amendments that they had provided us in a list. I'll go ahead and first go over the items that were required by HCD. As far as multifamily residential is concerned, HCD stated that we would have to change our code to allow for a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet for any development of new multifamily residential projects. In the past, we had MF for multifamily, eight, 15, 20, and 45, which had different minimum lot sizes. Multifamily, the minimum lot size was two acres, for instance. Now they're saying that we cannot allow, we cannot require more than 20,000 square feet. So that is proposing the change. And they also wanted us to add language in the ordinance that if multifamily residential projects that provided a minimum of 20% of the total dwelling units reserved for lower-income households would be allowed by right. And in addition to that, they had required us to consolidate the required, the minimum or the required number of parking spaces for all multifamily development types like condominiums, multifamily dwellings, whether they're in a mixed-use zone or a multifamily zone. So just one standard parking type. And for emergency shelters that would allow for up to 30 occupants, we are going to be requiring a CUP for all other zoning and with, with exception of manufacturing in the regional mixed-use zone. HCD is also requiring that, well, they're saying that we can't require bicycle parking for, for multifamily development. And so in this, in section 25 is also another section that consolidates the development, the parking requirements for multifamily zoning. There, since the development code update was completed, there has been certain changes to state law that we're addressing in this cleanup. And these changes are already in effect and cities are, the city, all cities are required to comply with it. So we decided to include it in the cleanup. So the public hearing notification process, if it involves a zone change and a general plan amendment, in the past, it was just 10 days. Now we are required to have a 20-day public notification process. And SB 1, SB 1211, increase the number of ADUs that are allowed in, or that are mandated cities to allow for multifamily dwelling zones or uses from two, up to two units to up to eight units or one per primary unit, whichever is less. So if a multifamily dwelling has 20 units, then they can have up to eight ADUs. But if it only has eight units or four units, then they can only have four ADUs, so one per primary unit. One of the other changes in the PCD-1 zone, it references a zoning that is no longer, that we no longer have. So it's just changing it to the zoning that we currently have. There are my, I guess, other revisions in the development code update that can be considered minor that I'm not going to go into in detail, like capitalization changes, syntax changes, the definition for new structure and also unclassified use permits were added and other clarifying details to clarify what the intent is for certain languages throughout the development code. Some portions of the development code were renumbered. We added quantifiable standards for, for the recreation vehicle... We added quantifiable standards for the recreation vehicle parking on how much percentage of the driveway it can block, so that it would be easier for code enforcement to enforce the current code. And we added, we added the community development director and city attorneys as initiators to code amendments. And this portion that was added in the development code or proposed in the development code update cleanup, when it went to planning commission, was not recommended to the city council by the planning commission. Note that if the community development director and city attorney is allowed to be initiators to any code amendments, then the code amendment would still require planning commission review through a public hearing process, and it would require city council review through a public hearing process in order for the code amendment to be adopted as an ordinance. We also added regulations addressing glares from solar panels, and also, we revised the city's code so that it's consistent with state law. One other item that the planning commission did, I'm going to go ahead and go through items that the planning commission did not recommend. And if the city council would like the city to consider or not consider the items that the planning commission did not recommend, if during discussion or the motion, if the city council member making the motion can specify which sections you would like to include or not include in the code introduction, the ordinance introduction. So section fourteen deals with step massing. This section of the code was added in order, because there are certain areas in the city that are hillside lots. And this section allows for construction following the slope or hillside areas with, and discouraging extensive cut and fill or grading. So it's to build along the slope and then in the natural terrain of the lot. And please note on the photograph that has a checkmark that says minimum cut and fill, it's not exactly this photograph that we are trying to, well, that we are going to be allowing with this section of the code, because the city only allows up to two stories. The bottom stories would, just imagine the bottom stories not being in the picture. So it's construction following the hillside, basically.
And Joanne?
Yes.
Okay, I have a question.
Sure.
So you're talking about the hillside mapping?
I'm sorry?
The hillside massing?
Yes, the hillside massing.
So what is the recommendation from the city?
It would be to adopt the hillside, this section of the code for hillside massing, because it allows construction along the slope, because right now, the maximum height is taken from the lowest adjacent grade to the highest point. So if you're looking at the photograph right here, if, if it's on...
So the planning commissioner, they declined?
They did not recommend, because they felt that this should be a separate code amendment with further discussion by the planning commission, and it shouldn't be with the cleanup.
Okay.
So they did not, they weren't necessarily opposed to it. They just wanted to be a separate discussion and a separate code amendment.
But what is the city position?
We included it in the cleanup.
So you already clean up? Okay, thank you, okay, move on. Thank you, appreciate. By the way, another question on hillside. This West Covina, I know other cities have a so-called view ordinance, so people don't fight with their view, so they don't block people's view. Do we have a lead ordinance?
We do not have a view rights ordinance.
So how do you think? Because I mean, we have a lot of dispute, where people are fighting, or maybe even suing each other. Okay, because the view is value of the property. So maybe we need to add some ordinance, so everybody being protected, they don't build too high to block somebody's view.
We could definitely look at bringing that back to council.
Would you please? So we can, we saw a lot of dispute, otherwise, okay, we have so many hillside, and people are fighting one inch of their view. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Building on that sentiment, if the city could also look at what would happen in situations where trees are allowed to grow so high that they obstruct view, that'd be, I don't know if that would fall under this or not.
Agree, I think that somebody have a tree so high, and they don't train, and they block neighbor's view, and I think so become an issue. So I think we need to, okay, including lead, because view is how people purchase their property. And I think we need to protect those people investing their property, especially on the hillside. And so in that way, we make it clear, and then we have no dispute for any neighbors.
We can definitely look at that, and bring it to the city, the planning commission, and also the city council as a separate.
I think we need it, okay, since we have so many people building on the hillside, and we want to make sure we don't have a dispute. And I know a lot of cities, they have a view ordinance. Okay, any other question, otherwise, we move on. Continue, please.
And then we, we have temporary, we have temporary non-commercial signs that were, that were, the temporary non-commercial sign section of the code.
I don't know where we're at.
Okay, Joanne, sorry, okay, councilmember Gutierrez has a question, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know where we're at. Which one are you on right now?
Section twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine.
Twenty-seven, which one, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so we, staff proposed making changes to the sign portion of our development code in regards to temporary non-commercial signs, and also election season signs. So the temporary non-commercial, the temporary non-commercial signs, they're, and also election season signs, were revised to make it more enforceable and to promote, to promote freedom of speech. Also, this section, the planning commission did not recommend approval by the city council. The, another section is regarding urban dwelling units. There have been changes to state law, or changes to the way the state or H C D has been applying the A D U section of the government code or state law. So this change would be consistent to how H C D is requiring cities to apply the A D U standards, and how many A D U's one can have per lot. So in this sense, the state is, and making the city, or stating that cities have to allow at least four units per single-family residential lot. So the primary dwelling unit, A D U conversion, a separate detached A D U, and a J A D U. So this is consistent with state law. Another section that is included in the development code update, which is section forty-three to fifty-one, this is regarding the subdivision and also maps. The section allows the community development director to approve lot line adjustments, lot mergers, and parcel maps. Lot mergers and lot line adjustments are currently done administratively. And also, urban lot splits, which is a type of parcel map, is required by state law to be approved administratively as well. So this is consistent with that. It does not change the fact that although, although these maps are going to, or are proposed to be approved by the community development director, if this city council accepts it, it still would have to go, the final map still would have to go to the city council to be presented and accepted by the city council through the final map process.
So basically, we still come to city council?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Where does it say, or go back to the city council?
It would be, well, it's by state law that final maps have to be approved by the city council.
And what was the reason to take it away from the planning commission, and for this to be added?
For, because the state law already requires certain type, smaller subdivisions to be approved and allowed by right. So this would be, make it more consistent with what state law requires.
Okay, and this is for any, I mean, what specifically?
Well, this is only, there are certain portions of state law that requires subdivisions of ten or less units to be approved by right, but this is not addressing that. We're going to do a separate code amendment to address that state law. But this is, the parcel map is for a four lot or less subdivision.
Does that include commercial projects, too?
It does include commercial projects, yes.
So includes big projects, then? Potentially?
Commercial projects, if they are, if they are, if they require parcel map, they're typically, they're typically, they typically also include a precise plan application for the construction in itself. So that would still require to be, to go to the planning commission for review and approval.
This specific section?
I'm sorry?
This specific section, this specific section forty-three?
Yes, it's for subdivision, not necessarily involving construction.
Okay.
And also, the parcel map process is also used to merge, like, four lots into potentially one lot in certain types of project, so.
Okay, got it.
Okay, thank you.
There is also another recommendation that we have, let me go ahead and get to that. It's not showing up in this portion of my slide, but I think I had skipped it before I moved forward with the general recommendation. Sorry. Elena, do you know where the slides are? The presentation slides? Another recommendation that we have is regarding city council procedure call-ups. This is section twenty-six dash one ninety-six in the city's development code. So previously, the city didn't have city council call-up. So if the planning commission reviewed, approved, or denied an application, the city council did not have the authority to call up. The city council would have to appeal a project similar to the general public and pay the appeal fees. So the call-up procedure allowed the city council to call up any decision that was made by the city council, to review it de novo at a public hearing. However, this portion of the development code required a four-fifths vote. And in certain cases, like if the city council was going to have a meeting, it would have to, and if the city council wanted to call it up, it would have to be done at the meeting immediately after the planning commission meeting. However, there may be some instances where there would not be any way that a four-fifths vote can be achieved. Like, for instance, if there were only three council, there's a quorum, but only three council members are present, then the four-fifths vote could not be achieved. So in this case, it would allow two council members to call up a project in writing, and it would, and the meeting would be set at a later date, within sixty days after the initial call-up. So this portion of the code makes it, I guess, covers any potential possibility that there's certain situations, like no four-fifths vote would be present.
Yes, Joanne, I think this is, this change is needed, because sometime, we need another safety net to, okay, your planning approved, but they may be problematic, and the, okay, the weather doesn't know, okay, this and that. So the city council can have a two-vote, okay, to put an agenda, to have a hearing again about the development.
Yes, and if that does happen, the city council, the public hearing would still be, would still follow the notification process as a regular public hearing. So it's not, it's not where the city council just says, okay, we'll call it up, and we'll have the hearing today, or the next meeting.
They still follow the procedure.
The public hearing.
Everything is to follow the law. Uh, Councilwoman Kent, you want to say something?
Just, so just to clarify, so in that case, if we were to lower the number to two, then that would mean that in that instance, there is not a need for majority for city council approval, just two. Is that correct?
Yes, and just two, and it's, it'll just be at least two council members asking to hear the item. So the item still would be heard, and it still requires a majority city council vote in order to approve or deny the item during the public hearing.
The two is only for...
To trigger it.
To trigger, to trigger the review.
So the city council can get a detailed review about the project that the two city councils are concerned, and hopefully, another safety net, okay, for about any development. Maybe have an issue or problematic. Any other council, yeah, go ahead, councilmember?
Yeah, yeah, I think this is important, because at the end of the day, I think the city council holds a responsibility to the constituents who elected them to office, and when items have to get councils' attention, this will now give the council the mechanism to bring this item forward at a public city council meeting. My question is, for notification for certain projects, would the council have discretion if we wanted to notice up to a thousand feet on some, on certain projects, or would that have to be included in this code update?
It would have to be included in this code update.
Okay, so how will we recommend an edit to this code update right now? During the motion?
This is the introduction of the development update cleanup to section twenty-six of the city's municipal code. So you would, the council would direct, would put that in the motion. And then when it goes to the second reading, it will be included in the staff report, and also the ordinance.
Okay, great.
You okay?
Yes.
And so basically, when two city councils request to put that, approve a project from the planning commissioner, okay, and then can request maybe... the planning commissioner, okay, and then can can request maybe due to the size, okay, the resident cannot be notified due to the distance, okay, so we can, okay, extend to from five hundred feet to one thousand feet?
Yes.
Okay.
For for if you if you're talking about the call-ups, yes, the city council can can do can provide that direction.
Yeah, because, okay, sometime, okay, the five hundred feet not even go out the parking lot, so the resident won't be, okay, get a notification at all. So hopefully, we want to everybody participate and understand what's happening in their neighborhood. Okay, another, okay, go ahead, council member.
Yeah, one more question, and I think you already went over this section, so just to go back on it. In regards to the signage, campaign signage, I think this question is more for the develop, I mean, for the contractor. How was that updated? How did you get that information to update in that in this code, specifically regarding that update contractor?
You want to? I'm going to.
Well, thank you for that question. My name is John Moreland with Ringcon Consultants. For the the sign regulations, there was analysis conducted with other cities and other jurisdictions, and best practices were essentially incorporated into this code.
Great, and my next question for you is, is there any anything else in this code update, even either on this, not obviously not in this package, but in general, in that big book you gave you gave to the planning commission and to the council, is there anything else in that booklet that we should be aware of that was changed? Items that are in the public's interest, such as political signage and other items that are of importance for this council to be aware of?
And here, I think everything that was identified in the in the staff report, as well as Joanne's presentation, summarized and encapsulated the summary.
Okay, yeah, because like the campaigns that we didn't learn about until after the fact. So I just want to make sure there's something else in that hundreds and hundreds of pages of booklet you gave us, so, great.
Any other questions? Do we we don't need to ask for speak in favor or anything like this?
It is a public, yeah, hearing, so you can open up. I don't believe there's any speaker.
So we make a motion?
Any speaker for, no, anyone who'd like to speak in favor of the project?
No, the only notation I have is that R. Robinson is neutral.
Okay, thank you. So should I close the public testimony portion of the public hearing and ask council, well, there's any other further discussion? Nope. Okay, do I have a motion to introduce ordinance number two-five-two-five for the development code update cleanup?
I'll make a motion to approve that with a amendment to change the radius of notification from five hundred to one thousand feet.
Okay, I think we should keep five hundred in general, but if we.
Okay, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, sorry, let me fix it. So it'll be it will maintain five hundred, but the council, if it's if it's appealed by the council under the two-member policy, that the council a council majority can request at that time that a radius be extended to a thousand feet for notification.
Or one thousand or even more.
Or even or.
Depending on how big the property.
Yeah, Tom, is there a max?
Is that just for the appeal?
Yes.
For the call-up?
Just for the call-up.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have a flexible to, okay, because otherwise, if five hundred, maybe not even outside the parking lot, the resident won't get notification. So if we can extend it.
Five hundred.
Yeah, if we want to do the one thousand.
If the council calls it up, then you want to go to a thousand.
Correct. We will depend on the property, okay? Some property, five hundred already enough for the regular radiate, but some property, commercial, the parking lot is huge, that five hundred possible and plus the freeway, that basically nobody will get notification. But we want to make sure people will know what's going on in their neighborhood, so we have left flexibility and to get a bit longer, okay, of this. And the council, Councilwoman Kent, you want to say something?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just a question for the city attorney. Would this be able to be written in a way that can show, I mean, can meet the goals that were described, but also be done in a way that shows impartiality so that anyone who's petitioning can't allege that we're changing the notification scope in order to shape a particular outcome?
Mr. Mayor, council will ensure that that it's written in the correct manner.
Yeah, basically, it's five hundred, still five hundred, okay? And then the council have a flexible ability to extend the length, okay? And before we go to the, do we have a second? Somebody move already, right?
Yeah, I moved.
Okay, who have a second?
Second.
Okay, and so we have first and second, not yet, I'm not going to do the real call. I have a question, because on our this revised ordinance, it is thick, okay? So when we approved last time, and then we basically get sent back a lot of things sticking inside, we don't know, for example, campaign sign for ninety-day, that was forever in the city, I was running ninety-day, and they've been changed to sixty-day. So we want we do not want any surprise that we don't know. If we know, you can bring it to discussion, but if we don't know, I want to make sure this sick of dictionary, they don't have anything that changed, the city council don't know.
In the previous, sorry, sorry, mayor, if I may, in the previous code, development code update, or in this cleanup, are you asking, are you?
I'm asking the consultant, because some of the change, we don't even know. And I remember we sit in the meeting with the subcommittee, went through with you regarding, okay, the drive-through and et cetera, et cetera, but we never talk about ninety-day, sixty-day, the campaign sign ordinance. So I don't know when that had been changed from ninety-day to sixty-day. Now, we want to bring back to the state law, it's a ninety-day. So we want to make sure everything we comply with how our tradition and the state law is. And again, my point is, now you understand what I'm saying? I think city attorney understand the issue we have, because you you give us approval this thick, and we don't know, okay, which one that has been changed, modified, we not even notify the city council. So so and if you change anything, you have to notify us, so we can discuss, say, we want to accept this change, or, okay, we won't, okay? So I think this is a basic requirement. So we want to share with us, and do they have any other change that we don't know?
I think the the changes that are being made part of this development code update are included and outlined in the staff report. So those are all the changes that are being made.
So we won't get shocked next time when something happens, said, oh, you got approved?
No, because it's all included in the staff report, if I'm correct. So all of the changes made being made are listed in the.
Got it. So all the so we still have the the same thing like before, but we have a lot of revise and clean up, and this time we clean up everything, no surprise.
The last time, when the development code update was approved, it was a massive undertaking because it was updating a part of the the municipal code that hadn't been updated and cleaned up.
Entry, yeah.
Yeah, so this time, we are to to include all of the changes that were made as part of that would have required pages and pages to list them all out. So this time, because it's an update to what we already approved, we're able to outline those specific changes. But as we continue to go through the development code and projects come through, if there's things that we come and realize that, oh, we this could be written better, or we need to look at updating this, that's something that we continue, we will continuously do.
Do we have sent this to the state? Yes.
Yes.
Because they pay for it. It's grant, right? Okay, that's how you get paid from the state grant. State wants to do this update because they want us to go with what they want. So this all had to be approved by them. Okay?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'm going to vote to approve, but I just wanted to say that I really object to the way the state is just ramming this all the some of this stuff down our throat with regard to forcing us to have greater density that that we want. It's really, really awful that they're taking, I mean, just this whole struggle with we have as a city should should be able to have control over our own zoning here, but for them to put a gun to our head, basically, and force us to do this is really objectionable. So I'm going to vote for it, but I we have no choice, because then otherwise, they're going to come after us more. And I just I wanted to just register just my anger over that, because they're ramming things down our throat that I just feel like it's just overreach, but I just wanted just to say that.
I agree with you. I think all five city councils will agree, okay? And this is, we basically lose the local control, okay? Everything run by the state, and we have no say, okay? We cannot even require people have a garage, okay, and they can just park on the street. And how can we just park on the street and create a sanitation issue and overcrowded issue and this and that? But and, okay, this is a hard state, and put it on us. If we don't do it, you saw it, they sue the Huntington Beach, they sue all the city, and they can take the funding away from us. They just do everything to make sure you comply. So that's why we're sitting over here and using the the state grant and to update our code, meaning all the commercial zoning can be built, build residential and mixed use. This is our hurdle, but we have no choice. We just have to go with what state forced us to do. Again, we lose the local control, but I in the car, council government, everybody complained about this, but nothing you can do, okay? Because this state law and it wants to do it. Council member Gutierrez, go ahead.
Yeah, when you when you went to the restroom, I had asked the contractor to respond personally about.
Don't have to so loud, talk.
I'm sorry.
Just, I'm just, okay, walk away.
When you walked away, yeah, sorry.
Okay, I cannot hold too long, okay? Now you understand.
Me too. I go to the restroom too.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I had asked the contractor to respond directly on why we didn't know about the campaign signs. So if he could, if he could, if you could repeat yourself so the mayor could hear your 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 statement as well. And also, in regards to me thinking about you, so you you took information from other cities, but one of the issues that I saw was you there was a limit on how many campaign signs could be on someone's property. And ACLU said that potentially that was a violation of the United States Constitution. So I want to know, I mean, who gave you this information? I mean, who gave you this advice to amend the code that way? But also, repeat what you told me earlier, so mayor Wu could also hear. And that's for the contractor.
The consultant?
Consultant.
Yes, I'll repeat the the same comment, Councilmember Gutierrez. Mayor, Mayor Wu, what I mentioned previously was that what we what we looked at for the the campaign signage is compared other jurisdictions, and essentially kind of incorporated the best practices essentially into this update. And also, the other comment that was the other item that I mentioned as well, too, was that the staff report, the staff report, as well as the presentation by Joanne, that encapsulates all the all the amendments that are that are before you. So she did a great job summarizing everything.
Yeah, so there was nothing else in the in this book that we should be aware of that was a huge change?
Correct.
Okay, and then, yeah, I mean, it's after the fact, but we should always do, I mean, we should always ensure the constitution's following free speech. I don't know how you got that advice, but as long as we're fixing it now, that's what counts, so thank you.
No, I think right now, we already moved to ninety-day, right? Okay, so we back to the state law this and that, like.
Yep.
I, okay, used to. So so, okay, so anyway, and we have first and second, real call, please.
Yes, I have a motion by Councilman, Councilmember Gutierrez, a second by Councilwoman Diaz to approve ordinance number two-five-two-zero, with the only exception is to be able to increase the radius on appeals.
Yes.
Call-ups. Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez-Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, and motion approved five-zero. I want to thank Joanne, okay, and our consultant, okay, and I think we made charge for what, two years already? Okay, and thank you, finally, get it done, hopefully approved by the state, okay? And and anyway, and thank you for the hard work, appreciate. Okay, and we go to the, we have a one, two, three, four, five, five presentation from the department manager, that is from the city council, Madam AI, okay, some council request. So let's go to the number ten, the health department update and the presentation, and our, okay, public health, the Dr. Basil is around? Oh, right there, go ahead.
Good.
Yes, go ahead, city manager.
So I'll get the presentation started, and then I will turn it over to our health director, Dr. Basil. So just this is just to provide an update on where we are with on the creation of a the establishment of a public health department for West Covina. In two thousand and one, staff, city council directed staff to establish a West Covina Health Department. In April of that year, the public health director officer was added as a position to the municipal code. So we made various changes to the municipal code that year, not only for the positions, but also to include the health department code or establish it in our municipal code. And then in May of two thousand and twenty-one, the West Covina submitted to the state the overview and summary to the California Department of Public Health, and that was a summary of what we intended for our health, to establish our West Covina Health Department. Currently, right now, the city continues to contract with the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health. We have the county will continue to serve West Covina in its current capacity until the the city's health department is approved and established. The process of separating from the county will be a phased approach. Currently, the city's focus is to continue pursuing state approval for the health department, and since May of two thousand and twenty-one, the city has a city staff has been meeting monthly with the CDPH or California Department of Public Health in their development of the application certification and regulatory process. So when we submitted to the state of California our application, the state responded saying that they were going to revamp or re-update the regulations for establishing a health department. And so there's a process that they had to go through, and in the last three and a half years, CDPH has been working towards updating those public health regulations pertaining to establishing a new health department and other public health issues. In February of two thousand and twenty-four, the city council approved the Public Health Laboratory Service Contract with the city of Long Beach. This is one of the things that we believe will be a requirement or initial be required as part of the initial application, which also will require a community health needs assessment, and Dr. Basil will go into more information on that. The Community Health Improvement Project, the Public Health Emergency Preparedness and Readiness Plan, the Public Health Laboratory Services Agreement, and possibly others. So since we submitted the application, the city has been working towards meeting those initial requirements that we believe we will need when we when the state's ready to move forward with our application. At present time, West Covina has completed a city emergency management plan with a Public Health Emergency Preparedness and Readiness Plan. We are continuing to work on finalizing the community health needs assessment and the Community Health Improvement Project. And then I will turn it over to Dr. Basil.
Yeah, you had to repeat again. Okay, you guys, we started.
Hello, yes. West Covina Health accomplishment during the last three years, aside from collaborating with CDPH on the health department, organizing at least eighteen health fair with over at least two thousand participants. We offer screening for asthma, cardiovascular risk, diabetes, hypertension, mental health, obesity, osteoporosis, and vision screening and so forth. We also collaborated with several local hospital to provide at least twenty-two-plus continued medical education session for the community physician, nurses, and healthcare providers. Also, we secured some COVID- nineteen and flu vaccination and testing for the community. We have distributed at least three to five thousand health education material, both from CDC, CDPH, NIH, and all the specialty medical society to local churches, school, and community organizations. We have conducted at least three. We have conducted at least three health survey with over one thousand residents participating. At the present, we gather a lot of community health data, perform health need assessment and develop improvement projects. We are trying to build up partnership with local businesses, churches, clinics, hospitals, school, and community organization. We have developed a bunch of health education program, which we hopefully will roll out these years. Also, one thing with the new development is also we have been working with the school district, working with the school nurses training program. The first one we've done was about three months ago. It was well received and we're going to continue establish that program with the school district, which is taking care about ten percent of our populations. Also, the regulation package has undergo final review by the CDPH legal council before submitting it to the office of the director of CDPH and was approved it. In the middle part of two thousand and twenty-four, for the director approval, it was submitted to the Secretary of California Health and Human Services and Governor Nielsen simultaneously for their expedited approval and also was approved it. At present, the public health regulatory package update is at the Department of Finance for the analysis of the economic impact to the state of California and the potential funding for the local health departments. CDPH has not provide any estimate timeframe as to when the Department of Finance will be able to finalize their analysis and funding of the local health department. Upon completion of the analysis by the Department of Finance, CDPH will prepare for the opening of public comments to update, about the update public health regulation package. The present, the budget that we have for this project is about five hundred ninety-eight thousand. We have spent about four hundred ninety-eight, five hundred and one dollar thirty-four cents and remaining balance of ninety-nine thousand six hundred eighty-eight and sixty-six cents. And this is all the breakdown of the inwards we received the last three years. The next step, when the public comment period and amendments are completed, the public health regulation package in our application certification and regulatory process will be filed with the Secretary of State. Upon filing with the Secretary of State, CDPH will establish a new department to accept new local health department. Upon approval of the application of a new local health department, CDPH will grant the local jurisdictions a so-called provisional status with a two years period to fully establish a full service that will meet the local community needs. Upon granting the provisional status and recognized by the CDPH, the new local health department will probably be able to start receive some funding from CDPH, from the state and apply for aid and grant to support the rest function of the local health department. The new local health department will be expected to eventually accredited by the Public Health Accreditation Board. For any organization that was wish to partner with us, with West Covina Health, I think we can contact the city manager's office at six, two, six, nine, three, nine, eight, seven, four, three. Let's, and then this would end of my report. Thank you. If there's any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Basil and the city council. Anybody have any question? And if you guy want to weigh, I want to say this, you know, we started two thousand and twenty-one. Okay, and we appoint you as our health officer with a very little budget for these three, four, four years already. And we done everything CDPH wants to do. And we once a month have a meeting with Dr. Chapman. And we basically done everything the CDPH want. And I think I want to thank you. You sacrifice a lot, doing a lot of public health service for our school, especially Covina Valley Unified School. And they've been, okay, using your service for train their nurses because they have about fifteen thousand student. And they have about what, thirty nurses? And they never been really into the medical, with your medical background, you really train them and try to protect our children. And I think this is something important. And I know they even recognize you in their school district event. So I want to thank you, okay? And I know this is a very tough role to stop anything new. And but the idea is protect the public health of our resident because you don't know when another pandemic going to hit us. And we know currently you have epidemic in the East Coast. But we hope nothing will happen in our area. But the thing is, I, my question will be this, okay? We done everything and we doing everything they want. And I think we set up all the, okay, and the detail for them, including our structure. But they need to give us the requirement so we can, talking about the so-called a budget. And that budget we including the state federal grant, the state grant, just like exactly like Pasadena. Pasadena received a twenty million dollars. But we know currently we're not going to fly right away. We have to crawl and then walk and like a baby steps. So the first thing we need to be approved, tell months the provisional approval. Okay, I think that is how we want to get a provisional approval, meaning what? Inspection, okay? Inspection for restaurant, inspection for the hospital, inspection for cafeteria, inspection for, okay, and supermarket, anything with fuel, okay? And including the motel, hotel. It's under the jurisdiction of, okay, health department. So for example, some hotel, they never been inspect by the county health department. Then the city, we can inspect them. So make sure they comply with ordinance. And, okay, another thing, okay? Basically, we, okay, can more efficiently provide the service rather than currently, I think the problem we everybody know. So I think how soon we can get this provisional approval? And I know Dr. Chapman say very soon. But can we do this? Because when we doing the inspection, meaning what? They don't have to pay the county anymore, they pay the city. And city can inspect not only the hotel, my understanding, a lot of so-called the group home. Okay, they service six person in their home. We have no jurisdiction and they create nuisance to our neighborhood because they allow them to just buy ride and city has no, even no information about this setup. Okay, and the facility to serve mental health people or drug addict people or drug house or safe home. Okay, and how we, okay, supervise them? That's supervised by the health department. So that's why the health department inspection is so important to make sure in check and protect our community. And that is how, okay, we need this inspection ASAP. Do you know any timeline? And since this is self-sufficient, this inspection will pay by the service render. Do you have a kind of, okay, one month, two months? Based on Dr. Chapman can grant us, okay, that at least a provisional approval? Go ahead.
Yeah, at this time, I think we are working with the city attorney, with CDPH. We're going to send them a letters, basically expressing our potential legal right to have a health department. And maybe we can, you know, do a so-called phase in starting now until we able to get the approval from CDPH in term of recognition. Because CDPH has to be able to recognize us in order to pass along their funding from CDC. The other thing is also keep in mind that actually, for example, the inspection component is actually self-funded. And it can readily establish when we turn around. Because for example, the fiscal year for the county starting July first. And if we want to do any inspection, we have to actually start giving them notice that we want to take over the inspection part. And that can be totally self-supported while we are building up the rest of the health department over the next two years. So hopefully, we through the letters from our city attorney and us, the health department, to talk to CDPH whether they willing to let it move on that next step. The only problem is that CDPH is so huge and a lot of section, like for example, vital record and so forth. They would not be able to assess the data until we are being recognized by CDPH. So this is something that we probably had to negotiate. As far as timing, as far as timing so far, Dr. CDPH has not been able to estimate. Because right now is really out of this CDPH jurisdiction. It's really up to the state now, the Department of Finance. After the finance approve, hopefully this month we're not able to met with the CDPH because Dr. Chapman was not well. So we'll be postponing our meeting to March twelve. And hopefully we have a better update. And it's getting close to the deadline that we need to give LA County to in term of taking over the inspection for July first.
Yeah, got it, okay? I think the problem is the state is so huge, it's simply like county. You have so many, 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 many department and so many of different layer of government. Maybe we need a dodge for them, okay? So hopefully can clean up and everything will be efficient and save taxpayers money. So maybe city attorney can talk about, okay, when you can, city attorney? City attorney? City attorney?
Yes, so we've had conversations, I've had conversations with their attorney. Dr. Basil has had conversations with Dr. Chapman on the best way to approach this. And we'll, and we have ideas now, we'll get a letter out to them probably.
Yes.
End of next week to let them know our position and.
Yes, I think it's important to our city attorney, our city to write a letter, okay? And, okay, with the city and the city attorney, okay? And checking everything and make sure they receive this letter in the public channel, not go into the black hole and into the twilight zone. We do make sure they receive the request that we comply with what they want for four years already. Okay, how many life, four years you have? Okay, and to get this very easy thing, okay, to approve, just a provisional approval? Why are we taking so long? And by the way, based on the contract, that city have the right to set with fifty thousand population can set up their own health department. That's per our, okay, jurisdiction of our city, okay? And we just contract out to county and the county don't do the job we like, we can take it back. And we will get the funding from the state and federal like Pasadena. And we are more than hundred thousand population, why we are taking so long? So I think this is something you need to hurry up to write a letter with Dr. Basil. Maybe I can sign the letters, the mayor, okay, to request them, okay? Because people's lives is in danger with all this virus going on. We need to hurry up, okay, to make sure the public health, okay, is implement to our community. And all the city council wants to said, okay, Councilmember Gutierrez, go ahead.
Yes, when you say we're, LA County needs notification, when, by July?
Well, the fiscal year start in July first.
And what notification, what notification are they looking for?
I'm sorry.
What type of notification are they looking for?
I think they need a notification whether we want to continue with the, for their service. But if we want to take over, we have to, I think, have to give them notice by May because that's the time when they have to send out their notice to the local businesses and so forth for their licensing and permit fee and so forth.
So the city attorney's office look into how city ordinance is able to do their inspections?
No, not.
Okay. Okay. So I think, I think that's important because I think we're running out of money here. So there's ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars left. So what's the city's proposition or proposal and how to get more funding? For this, if for this department, if the council wants this to continue, what's?
We are already working four years, not going to give up, okay? We're going to, we're almost there. We're on the, on the, okay, on the peak, okay? And a couple step, we are on the top. So we are going to give our provisional approval. We're not going to let them play us. We work with them for four years, spend money, spend time, spend effort. And we just got play and not going to happen, okay? So we are going to make sure, okay, we're going to get what we get. Our entitlement is our right. Okay, we're not here acting for some leftover or, okay, mercy. We asking for our right to protect our resident. Period. So let's get this thing done and we still have ninety-seven thousand dollars, okay? And if, be carefully using the money, okay? And we want to get this thing done. Another thing, if God forbid, we can get a grant or something, okay? So we can continue injecting to it. But currently, I prefer, let's get it work, okay, get it done. So in that way, we can receive the funding or receive the inspection, okay, fee. And then we can self-sustain. You want to say something? Go ahead.
Yeah, so how much, so how, when is this, when is this fiscal, so fiscal year ends what, in June?
So the amount is based on the contract and not on a fiscal budget.
Okay, so how much is the contract?
The total, sorry, let me pull it up.
Yearly.
So the total amount that has been budgeted or allocated for the contract is five hundred ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety. That's not, that money does not expire or go away after the calendar year. It's based on the contract. So as long as there's funding in the contract, funding.
No, but how much, how much is a yearly? There's so many invoices. We have ninety-eight thousand dollars. So if we're going to run out of money, we're going to tell us this after the fact or we're going to figure it out now?
No.
So I'm trying to find out.
So you're asking to be notified, obviously.
Yeah, how much is our, how much is our obligation yearly for the health department? So I could figure out if ninety-eight thousand dollars is enough to cover this department.
Monthly invoices have range between three to five thousand.
Why is there, what do you mean range? What does a range mean?
Depending on the work that is being done, we get invoiced for that. So if there's one month that requires more hours.
It's, it's being paid by hourly services?
Correct.
So in one year, so, so roughly how much, I mean, is, so I'm trying to understand if ninety-eight thousand dollars is enough?
Okay, let me, let me on this, okay? I know Councilmember Gutierrez, you just want to make sure we have enough funding so we can achieve the goal. So we don't want to like, we almost there, but we run out of money. But I, but I understand your question regarding where the money spent. For example, we have event and they have a health, okay? And coming out with a bunch of volunteer with this and that. And with Jose, one of the staff, and that costs money. And when we have Moon Festival, we have then to come out and to do the outreach, okay? And Spring Festival, we have then to come out with outreach. And we, when we have event, it costs money, okay? And for people to do, okay? And even we have a lot of internship, volunteer residency for all your connection. But some of the table, okay, thing we, they rent, it costs money, okay? And just like, so, so, okay, if we want money, we just ask for donation. So to make sure this thing will continue, okay? We want to get this thing done. And I know you, you sacrifice a lot for your career, just help us to get this thing early. Because three, four, three, four thousand dollars a month. And basically, our health, health officer do it for free. So anyway, and then, but we need to find out the way we don't run out the funding for a community outreach, for do some of the service for our school, okay? And nurses, this and that. Okay, so go ahead, continue.
Yeah, so, so, so both employees for the health department are paid hourly then?
Microphone.
All of the individuals working on this project or through this contract are hourly.
So what plan do you have in place if you run out of money? How will you put more money in there?
We'd have to look at other funding options.
And would that require?
And we would also.
Council's approval?
Yes, we would have to come back and do an amendment to the contract.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman Ollie.
Thank you, thank you so much. Paulina, how much has been spent in total thus far in dedication to the health department? And these related efforts, not just including this contract of five hundred ninety-eight thousand, but just from the time this started, is five ninety, five hundred ninety-eight thousand the universe? Or did we spend more under other contracts?
No, for the establishment specifically of the health department is five hundred ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety.
Thank you.
So this is from two thousand and twenty-one here now?
And these are ARPA funds.
So for four years, okay, we, okay. Or anything, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so my concern is, is that we need some sort of action plan here, so. So the law's the law, so if, if it's saying one thing in the law, then why are we not enforcing the law? We're just, we're, we're going to be wasting money on an endeavor that will never become possible if we're not enforcing the law and how the law is written today. So we can't just continue to spend money and, and have, have no action plan as a resolution is my concern. So someone's going to have to figure out a solution and an action plan to be, to be brought back to this council and how, if these goals are going to be met, how are we going to do that? And what the current law says in the state's current law on the city's right to do its own permitting or not do its own permitting. And based upon what the law says, is, is how we make conclusions here, but if, if we don't know that, then we, we can't get nowhere. So we're going back, we're going back and forth on not progressing. And so like Mayor Wu says, he's, this has been how many years now?
Four years.
Four years. So we need to look at the law and see what the law says and, and then brief this council back with the public being part of it and, and let the public know and us know so we make sure that we spend money efficiently for the, for the taxpayers.
Okay, good, okay, the four years including 2021, 2022, my election, and we call last year is all about the health department and I'm still here. So meaning what, the resident wanted, okay, they want the public health to, to protect them. So anyway, okay, and Mayor Porten, okay, Lopez, Rialdo?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess to fulfill both sides, with the remaining balance left, I believe, Councilman Gutierrez would like for us to see what is the implementation of how that funding is going to be used, what is the minimum requirement that the Department of Health requires. And we thank you for having these health fairs, but if, if there's a certain limit, because if, if we only need to have two per year, then why waste the money and have 10, you know? So if we could just possibly have something so that we know that this funds won't run out and that it's properly being used and set of whatever the minimum requirement is, so maybe that will fulfill your request in making sure that these funds will be utilized and making sure that that fund will last us maybe a year, a year and a half, or, you know, that it doesn't run out in six months. So maybe we can request that.
Good point. Okay, I think so right now is we just need the state to give us approval. Okay, so we can run our inspection and then we can collect feed, collect fees. Okay, and all the city council want to talk? Okay, otherwise, okay, any?
I'll just say that I think according to some research I did, I think certain, the city of Vernon does not have California Department of Health, Public and Human Services approval, right?
That's correct, they do health inspections.
So they have an agreement with Los Angeles County Health, right?
Yes, I think so.
Yes.
Yeah, according to City of Vernon, yes, they somehow, back in the eighties, they were also arrangement with LA County Public Health Department to delegate that authority. But as far as CDPH is concerned, they don't recognize them at all. So they don't receive any funding, but their, their population is only like a couple of thousand people. So they actually has more worker in the city, so they allow tax dollar actually supporting all the workers working in the city of Vernon. So finance is not issue for them, but so far I didn't know how CDPH is going to resolve that issue, that they technically don't have the authority for health, health inspection.
They've been, they've been doing that for years. So my point is, is that if we're going to, are we going to make money here or not make money here? So we need to start taking, we need to have an action plan.
Yeah, got it. Okay, I think the point is we, if we can have our provisional approval for inspection, that is money coming in to support, okay, our health department at the 12 months and after that with 24 months with medical and let there will be, they can, the state can take their time to give a funding in the medical, but on the provisional approval of inspection, we don't, okay, it's self sufficient, it's equal pay for itself. Okay, other than that, let's move on, okay, can we move on? It's okay, thank you so much, and can we move on? Okay, but I think I, I can see the light at the end of tunnel, okay? I'm more optimistic, okay? I think we fighting for four years, I think city manager have the same confidence, okay, I think city council is the same thing too, and I want to thank Dr. Bezos to continue to the service, almost like a volunteer like us, okay, but appreciate you helping us and let's get this thing happen. And the city attorney, city attorney, city attorney, okay, would you please, can I have a, a, okay, attorney letter? Okay, if you need me to sign, okay, maybe even five city council, okay, we want the city to, to stay to tell us, okay, when it is the D N, okay, and the four years is long enough. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, I oppose the health department, do not put my name on that letter, please.
Okay, it's fine, it's fine, it's fine. Okay, and so we, at least we have a three or four vote, okay, with the health department. Okay, okay, and now we move to next.
Just for clarification, I have something to say. So just for clarification, we're not here, I'm not here today to say we're voting on the health department. What, what I'm saying is we need an action plan to make money. If we're not making money, then we need a solution. So I, I am saying a solution is needed and, and I think it's going to come from our, our city manager's office and city attorney's office. So if anything, we, we need to be aware of what's going on.
Okay, very good. Okay, since this is approved, okay, project to set up this health department, okay, so we are continuing to do it unless we have next vote regarding who we should continue or not. Other than that, currently we are going to set up our health department. Okay, we're moving to number 11 presentation, the city West Covina Current Emergency Operation Plan. So who is going to present this?
Our Chief Cortina and Chief Brown will be providing a presentation.
It's 10 o'clock already, so we talked too much.
Are you going to sit there or do you want to sit here?
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff and members of the community. Chief Brown and I wanted to give you a brief overview of our city's emergency operations plan as well as talk about the recent activation we had where we were able to implement this plan. I'll be handling the portion covering our current plan and just giving a very brief explanation of it. And then Chief Brown will handle the recent activation. So the, the purpose of the presentation is obviously to brief the city council on the contents of the updated emergency operations plan that was completed in 2023 and briefly discuss the recent EOC activation. And why we updated the plan is it hadn't been updated in quite some time. We need to incorporate new legislative requirements, incorporate best practices, ensure compliance with California Office of Emergency Services and U S Department of Homeland Security Guidelines and consistency with plans of neighboring cities. So all the, the disaster area management zones all use, utilize the same template to ensure that the communication back and forth between the local agencies and the state is consistent. The purpose of the emergency operations plan is to provide the planning basis for coordinated response to extraordinary emergency situations associated with natural and human caused emergencies or disasters within or affecting our city. And who will use the plan? City management, city first responders, city support departments and external organizations participating in a response. The operational goals are to mitigate hazards, meet basic human needs, address needs of people with access and functional needs, restore essential services and support community and economic recovery. Our operational priorities, the emergency operations plan is to save lives, protect health and safety, protect property and preserve the environment. As far as plan activation, the city's emergency operations plan may be activated by the city manager, assistant director of emergency services, fire chief, police chief, or designated alternatives under any of the following circumstances. And those are by order of the city manager or designee for the West Covina Municipal Code, Chapter Eight, Section 8.7, which covers emergency powers, upon proclamation by the governor that a state of emergency exists, automatically on the proclamation of a state of war emergency, upon declaration by the president of the existence of a national emergency, and automatically on receipt of an attack warning or actual attack on the United States or upon occurrence of a catastrophic disaster that requires immediate government And there are three types of emergency proclamations in California. There are a local emergency, a state emergency and a state of war emergency. A local emergency proclamation must be issued within 10 days of the actual occurrence of a disaster and it must be ratified by the city council within seven days of that proclamation. City council must review the need to continue every 30 days until the local proclamation has been ended. As far as the planning process for our emergency operations plan, the planning initiated in October of 2022. Plan development was guided by a planning team of representatives from the city departments based on standard templates developed by disaster management areas C, D and E. And the draft distributed to external stakeholders for review and comment before the final draft was completed. The external agencies provide, that were provided an opportunity to review or comment were the American Red Cross, Athens Waste Services, Emanate Health, Foothill Transit, SoCal Gas, Southern California Edison, Axis Transit and the Disaster Management Area D Coordinator. The elements of our emergency operations plan are part one, the overall framework for emergency response, part two, emergency operations center operations, and we additionally had the annexes, which provide additional detail for response to specific hazards and the appendices with just supporting information. The EOP part one contains situation and assumptions, standardized emergency management systems, or SEMs, concept of operations, organization and assignment of responsibilities amongst city departments as well as external agencies. And EOT, the, the emergency operation plan part two contains the emergency operations center activation, the emergency operations center organization, the emergency operations center operations and training and exercises. The annexes that were completed on this project were for severe weather, earthquake, criminal slash terrorist acts, pandemic slash health emergency and wildfire. And the appendices contained a quick start guide, resource request guide, information collecting and dissemination glossary and authorities and references. As far as a future emergency planning, the city was able to obtain a grant for full funding for a local hazard mitigation plan, and I believe that will be going to RFP in the near future. And we should also eventually look at additional EOP annexes to add to this plan, which could be notification and warning, evacuation, continuity of government and mass care. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Brown to talk about our recent activation
Thank you, good evening. If we can get to the local emergency proclamation timeline? I'm going to go over our activation, give you an overview of what happened when we had our recent wind event and our local proclamation. On January 7th, 2025, at approximately nine o'clock in the morning, city manager Paulina Morales, myself and Tony Cortina discussed the options of whether we needed to open the EOC at that time, what our plan was moving forward throughout the day and kind of what our trigger points were. At 1,500 hours, Verdugo Dispatch, which dispatches our fire resources, initiated what they call emergency mode to level B, which is still no change to West Covina's situation. What level B means that the Verdugo Dispatch Center means they're receiving high volumes of incident calls. All calls may be downgraded to a different response than normal regardless of the nature or type of incident. Verdugo continues the dispatching and EOCs may be activated at that point. At 1,818 hours, the Eaton Fire started in Altadena. At 1,900 hours, weather related calls begin, begin to increase in the city of West Covina. We have to skip a couple of slides there because they're duplicates. Then at 1,915 hours, Verdugo Dispatch moved to level C. Level C is a point where, let me get to it here. Level C is a point where Verdugo Dispatch got to the point where they were overwhelmed with calls. And then what they do is they move the dispatching, they just give you the basic emergency information and then the battalion chiefs in each city are responsible for dispatching their own resources out. That was part of the point that got us to start thinking that we needed to move in a different direction with the increased calls for service within our city and the fact that Verdugo got to level C, which is the first time in the history of that dispatch center that they moved that far down in their process. At 1,945 hours, city manager, myself and Chief Cortina decided that we should open the EOC at level three. And mind you, this was all happening during Chief Cortina's swearing in ceremony. Paulina and myself were texting back and forth during the ceremony while Tony was getting sworn in. So, you know, there was a lot of stuff going on at the same time. And this was called due to the, at this point, fire code enforcement and the maintenance department all called in additional resources to come in and help mitigate the situations. This slide here shows you the three levels of activation. I know it's small and hard to read, but basically to go over, level three is the lowest level of activation. Reasons for activating are weather, weather alerts involving two or more departments, power outages, to name a few, all of which were currently happening in the city. This requires a minimum staffing level of the EOC director, other section coordinators as needed. To go over the timeline of it, on January 8th, the local emergency proclamation was declared by the city manager, that was the day after the event happened. And just to remind you again, we have 10 days from the time the event started to declare a local emergency. On January 14th, the city council ratified this proclamation, again, within the seven days that's required. And then on February 4th, 2025, the local emergency proclamation was terminated by the city council. Just to compare what our activation was compared to other cities nearby, mind you that West Covina is approximately 18 miles away from the start of where the Eaton Fire Glendale, they're approximately 10 miles away. They moved to level one on Tuesday through Thursday, downgraded it to level two on Friday and then level three on Saturday. South Pasadena, which is approximately 8.4 miles away, they went to level two shortly after the start of the Eaton Fire and then by Sunday we're back to level three. Alhambra, approximately 9.8 miles away, went to level two shortly after the start and back to level three. back to Level Three on Friday. To highlight a couple cities that are relatively the same as what our activation was, Monterey Park and Arcadia, approximately 12 miles away, they were at Level Three. Burbank, roughly the same distance as West Covina in relationship to the Eaton Fire location, they were at Level Three. And then Laverne, our city to the east of us, also activated to Level Three. In my opinion, I think that our EOC activation was in line and consistent with the other cities affected by the Eaton Fire. And at this point, chief Cortina and I will take any questions that you have.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Okay, and is that why you request, okay, for the emergency operation plan? I think we should want to set up some kind of emergency plan, rather than talk about why you have...
Yeah, not the second part, but it's fine. Now we know.
So, yes, we just want to, the city have an emergency plan, okay, the police, fire, and the public health, okay, see, because when things happen, you need medical, okay? We need, okay, maybe Queensville Valley or in the community, or hospital with a doctor this and that to have a treatment. So I think this is all connected together. Without the medical, how you serve the people when you have your ambulance over there, where you send a tri-ya, okay, then you need a medical doctor, nurses over there. So this should be all included. Okay, let's go to the... Okay, who has a question? I think...
I just had a quick question. On the plan activation slide, it listed who may be activated. Who is the Assistant Director of Emergency Services?
I don't believe we currently have one.
Then that would be you.
Yeah.
You're the director now.
Okay. It's just on there. I know it says activated by city manager, Assistant Director, Emergency Fire Chief, Police Chief are designated alternatives. I was curious on that.
Yeah, we just vote for you to do it.
I've already done my share of...
No extra pay.
Me and that.
Yeah, we need to have our rank and fire doing the emergency, okay, what to do, and if they have some kind of earthquake, and who will be in charge, where is ours, okay, and the emergency, okay, respond team? And so in that way, we can serve the people that are current that time, maybe in need of help. So I think this is what we talk about, emergency operation plan, the city doing the disaster, and we have to prepare because the earthquake, okay, they say it's coming, and now you saw it, okay, the fire, that we cannot believe that will happen. It happened, okay? And so, go ahead.
Another question, because I go through emergency disaster training. What is the training that the city of West Covina has in regards to staff and everybody when a disaster hits?
I think that's also something that's lacking currently. I think bringing in a director that can oversee that and help with the planning, they can also help with the city events that we do in creating safety plans for that as well.
If I could add, sorry, I think that's part also we had talked about, and it's a mother may I to bring an emergency management consultant to help make sure that we have an EOC, which we currently do, but make sure that we are prepared and staff's prepared. And so that would be their goals to help.
That'll be at the next meeting, right?
Okay, council member Gutierrez, go ahead.
Okay, great. And then, so my question is, so are we going to make sure we amend the plan to include the suicide area?
Yeah, I think...
Yes, okay.
The plan is a citywide plan. It's not specific to any particular area, so this plan can be put in place no matter where the incident occurs within the city.
Yeah, so I know I had an opportunity to speak to chief Cortina, so if we can make sure we create a plan for that area, too.
If I could add, we also have a... We were awarded a grant for a hazardous mitigation plan, so we are in the process of moving forward and developing that.
And what's the status, Paulina, on FEMA's application for the National Exercise Program?
That should have been submitted.
If I may, that was submitted already. There's coordination back and forth between the city and the federal government on specific information they're asking, but it's already in process.
Yeah, because there's a March 3 deadline, right?
Yes, it was... We've already met that deadline.
Okay. And then I think I wanted a copy of that, Paulina? That was part of a council request?
Yeah.
And then, so we applied for multiple training that they were offering through the application process?
Yes.
Great. And then are we going to be submitting to FEMA our copy of our emergency operations plan to be certified by them? Was that... Did we select that as part of the application? One of the things that FEMA offered was their review of emergency operations plan in that application.
I'll follow up.
Yeah, so that's why I wanted it, so. Also... But yeah, overall, obviously, you both are doing a great job. I just want to make sure we're applying for all that free money out there. But yeah, you guys are doing a great job, and I think it explained a lot about what our emergency operations plan is, and I know next meeting we have a presentation on an emergency operations consultant slash director, so I look forward to that. And yeah, if we can make sure we... I guess told you, chief Cortina, to come up with a plan for that area up there, so.
Okay, okay.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, council member Gutierrez. Councilman Aldi Kentos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, when are there plans for us to have tabletop exercises with us as elected officials here included in that, so that in the event of an emergency, and there's a role that we each have, that we'll be ready because of having practiced with those tabletop exercises? That's my first question.
So if I could answer that, when we bring on the emergency management consultant, we'll be coordinating not only those tabletops, but also the... And I forgot what the classes were, but making sure that the training, the classes, and then the tabletops are all conducted. And yes, we will be working to have those tabletops with the council.
Thank you. And my only other question, the second question, is with regard to making sure to identify vulnerable persons, including senior citizens and persons with disabilities, can you describe further what are the plans to identify those individuals who may not necessarily be on our radar yet, and what we need to do to make sure that we check on them in the event of a major natural disaster, including earthquakes and other such calamities?
There are general guidelines in our plan, and again, bringing on an emergency services or emergency management coordinator will be able to help with the continuing efforts to really lock down specific guidelines, and this is just a general template for us to go by, but having someone in that position will allow us to establish those specifics.
Thank you. So can that be incorporated, please, when we go into the further details with the emergency operations director?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, if I can just add too, some of those patients are already identified just in our daily responses to certain homes. We flag certain addresses based on previous calls with our dispatch center, so that information is already in for some of our patients in the city.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, and are you done, councilman?
Thank you.
Okay, and more question? Man, I want to go home. Okay, council member?
Yes, final question. I know, so there was that application, and there was another application where FEMA pays full flight, hotel, food, and everything for law enforcement firefighters to be trained at FEMA's state-of-the-art facility. Do we know if we applied for that grant or for that program?
That particular training is in about two weeks from now, so we'll put it out to our officers, and I'll find out if anyone was able to make those personal arrangements to fly out of state on short notice.
Yeah, I know there's... I mean, it's not your fault, but it's been a couple of weeks, Paulina, where I gave you that, do a council request, and that was free training for emergency operations. So if we're not taking advantage of this programs, then what are we doing? So, but yeah.
That one particular training was active shooter response?
There was... No, this one was multiple... It was multiple... It was a law enforcement slash fire week that FEMA trains all firefighters and police officers around the country on emergency operations, from dealing with hazard mitigation, from dealing with dangerous chemicals. I mean, this is where they train all homeland security personnel, so.
So since the recommendation, if they have opportunity, and maybe CD, okay, and the police and fire can utilize the service or the resource. So I think that's what he tried to... So if you have any...
Well, if they didn't apply for that, then it's probably too late now, but...
So next time, okay, if it's there FEMA, okay, as they exist, then apply their, okay, the training thing. Okay, any other thing? I want to move on.
But yeah, I think this is something we probably should look at, create, you guys, next year, create a delegation of officers and firefighters, potentially our SWAT team officers and special personnel within the fire department.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Just for your reference, Allied Restoration here in West Covina has offered to provide to be a staging area. So I don't know if you already know that, but if you haven't, if you don't, if you could reach out to them just to see what they could offer, then that could be factored into any emergency response that we put together. Thank you.
Yeah, we've worked with them in the past, and actually, one of our fire engineers, his wife works for that company.
Oh, great.
So, okay, can we move on? Okay, thank you so much, okay, for my city council colleague. Okay, and the final thing I just want to share with you, I think emergency, okay, and the emergency operation plan is important to doing the emergency, how we react, how we have let rank and fire organization to help during the, okay, issue we have, okay, for example, previously, the big fire, and maybe heavy rain flooded the hillside, and our BKK potentially marslight or something, we don't know, okay? Earthquake, I think this is what people worry about, but I still encourage you to work with our appointed the health director, okay, work with his resource, with the medical service thing, okay, to become a network. Since we have a medical network, why not utilize police and fire all combined together? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, thank you so much, and we move on number two. I think there will be our police chief remaining, standing there, sorry, okay, and we will make it quick. Okay, number two, city hall CCTV, okay, metal detectors, okay, detector, and implementation. Go ahead.
Yes, so these are two separate projects, but I was asked to get a general estimate to have CCTV coverage.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I think the CCTV is at two locations. One is city hall, okay, and another one is 16th Park.
Yeah, for this particular one...
Only the city...
I was asked to cover the, in specific, the city hall exterior, the city hall parking lot, the interior of the council chambers, which would be the seating area, to have access control placed at the council chamber doors, and also to replace two outdated cameras that are between the police department and city hall, and also just maintenance to our current campus area exterior cameras around the police department, which are accessways towards the city hall. And I have an approximate labor cost of $65,000, an approximate material cost of $65,000, for an approximate total cost of $130,000. The types of cameras, I'll just briefly go over what we're looking at just in general. For the exterior cameras, we're looking at 4K AI-capable cameras, which means they can recognize human shapes, vehicles, license plates, things of that nature. In the interior, we're looking at a variety of different 4K cameras with multiple sensors.
Chief, good question. Do we need RFP on this or no? We need RFP.
We'd have to go through the purchasing policy.
Or we still have to go to emergency policy?
Yes, that's why I have... I don't have a specific cost. I have an estimate.
Okay, and may I put in have a question?
Yes, two years ago, I put in that request, we had a situation that occurred at the parking lot, and so I know we put in this request, and I was told that it was in the works that they're putting the cameras on, and I assumed that it was already in place.
So we do have... There are cameras at city hall. This would be to add or to augment to the current system.
So when I was told that they put cameras on the parking lot, that was not accurate?
There are cameras that are facing the parking lot. This would be to enhance the coverage.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Are you done? Okay, and council member?
Yes, so do we need an RFP, Paulina, for this or not? If it's extending cameras within whatever you already have, or do you be able to do the piggyback thing?
It would depend on the vendor that we previously used, if we're adding to them, and then if we would be able to utilize them again without having to go sit. But I'd have to verify with the purchasing policy.
Yeah, public safety is really important, but yeah. Okay, sounds good.
Can we get a grant for this? So we only have to touch the general fund?
We can look into that.
Can we? Would you please? And maybe TransAct can help us with a grant?
Pay for it?
She give us a thumbs up. She says they will cover everything.
Yeah.
Okay, and any other question? I continue.
Okay, but that's what we're looking at as far as the cameras, and I now want to move on. I was asked to do some general research on consideration for a metal detector at the entrance to the city council chambers. As far as required equipment, you would need a detector that you would walk through, which would be approximately $6,000, and you would also want a secondary handheld detector, which are approximately $300. Something to consider with installing these is the required staffing that would have to be in place for this. And to do it properly, you would need two security personnel in place, and they'd have to be in place for the entire entity, for the entire meeting. And so you're looking at roughly $80 per hour per employee to cover this. At two council meetings a month plus a planning commission meeting, which, let's say we average four hours per meeting, we're looking at a minimum of approximately $31,000 a year to cover this.
$31,000 a year?
At least.
Okay.
At least.
Good question. How many city... Okay, let's say same size city like Pasadena, El Monte, Pomona, the city council have anything like this?
Pasadena does, and LA.
LA is a big city. They need it, okay, but I don't know, we don't want to waste taxpayers' money or we can get a grant, but we don't want to, okay, overprotect it, but at the same time, we want to compare. Yes, go ahead.
So in Pasadena, they do have the metal detectors, but they do not have staffing to actually do the handheld wand, so you just go through, and I'm not sure if it was just a regular PD, but it was just pretty much to go through your purse and then go in, but not a metal wand.
So Pasadena has... Okay, how about El Monte?
I would have to check on...
How about Pomona?
I need to check on all the other cities specifically.
You know, they're similar size, okay? Pomona is about 135, 150, and Pasadena is about 140, and we are about 110, 120, okay? El Monte is about 106 or 107, okay, so it's about 100,000, okay? So we want to compare to make sure we are... If they don't have, maybe we, okay, okay, so, but we just want to make sure we just have a proposal, but see, that will... We have enough of fund, is the necessary, okay, or our office over here already enough to protect, to make the order, okay, in the council chamber?
Yes, I mean, just things to consider, the time for people to get in would be significantly delayed, and I do believe having that secondary hand one is probably, if you're already doing it, you might as well do it all the way and properly.
I don't need a handheld one, yeah. Cool, cool, cool. Cool, cool, cool. Okay, yeah, go ahead. Okay, councilman?
I'm just wondering, to to what extent are are there prevalent instances of of issues occurring in council chambers across either the state or the country that warrant these metal detectors and chambers? Just just from what you generally know.
I I'm not really aware of any uh particular violence with firearms that have occurred. Um, I think it's more of just a a safety thing where people maybe feel safe.
Uh, the fist fight.
I think I think there's been a couple of times where they murdered council members, but it's, I could send you the link solely.
I don't want to know.
My gosh.
Okay, so uh, any other question? Or the other chief you want to continue? Are you done?
I am done.
Okay, any other question?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, yeah, so I I think uh, when it comes to public safety, I think that's number one to this console, and I mean, I would like to see Paulina, if you could work on that pretty fast about the cameras, because uh, I mean, I I do feel safe for our officers being here, but I think it's for their own safety, too, that they that are, they have access to a camera system throughout city hall. And um, also, I'll just recommend on some of these cameras, like this one, Tony, um, you probably want to ask them for the eight megapixels, similar to my house, stronger.
We can update the request to eight.
If we're gonna if we're gonna do it right, and you want to make sure they give us the good stuff.
Okay, uh, thank you, council member. So now, okay, I think uh, our request would be IP for camera and TransTech going to pay for it? No, no, don't worry, okay, maybe you can look into grant for us. I know you got pretty good at that, okay, and put you on the spot. Okay, so anyway, uh, thank you, chief.
Thank you very much.
And uh, regarding the metal dictator dictator, or you guys' suggestion, or?
Yeah, I think like, I think cameras are important.
The metal dictator. Okay, so we just focus on camera?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, consensus with the five city council, we focus on the camera. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, okay, and now we move to number 13, public work operation. Uh, who is going to present this?
Uh, mayor, um, and council assistant, uh, city manager Roxanne Lermo will be presenting.
Okay, go ahead, Roxanne.
Give me just a moment. Um, mayor members of the city council, I am stepping in on behalf of our deputy public works director, excuse me, our acting deputy public works director, um, Raul Alvarado, who does have another engagement or some pressing family matters to attend to on Tuesday evening. So I am bringing his, not only his apologies, but also his well wishes um to this body. Um, just like um city manager Paulina Morales has indicated, I will be giving the public works um presentation for this evening. Um, as you may recall, council member Gutierrez had requested a presentation back in December on the capacities and capabilities of the public works department. So it is the hopes of the public works department that we were able to achieve this goal and shed some light as well as answer any questions that the council member and the count the rest of the council may have. So real quick, as an overview, the public works department consists of administration, building and facilities maintenance, park maintenance, street maintenance, graffiti abatement, sewer and stormwater systems, fleet services, and the maintenance of the sportsplex. Um, if you take a look at some of the staffing levels, um, I will also read those out loud to you as well. Administration for the public works departments includes a deputy director of public works, a public works superintendent, management analyst, and administrative assistant, and an office aide. Um, building and facilities maintenance is one building maintenance lead worker. Parks maintenance includes a maintenance services coordinators who oversees the park contracts. Street maintenance includes a maintenance services coordinator, maintenance lead workers, one that operate that works Monday through Thursdays, one that works Tuesdays through Fridays, one operator, two electricians, two maintenance workers, three, and nine maintenance workers, two, that are assigned as needed. Graffiti abatement team is consistent is comprised of two maintenance workers, two, that work Monday through Friday. Sewer and stormwater systems, um, this is also staffed from street maintenance, so it's the maintenance lead worker Tuesday through Thursday, one maintenance worker, three, and two maintenance worker twos. Fleet services is a maintenance services coordinator. Um, again, that that particular coordinator oversees um contracts. So the parks maintenance services coordinators and the fleet maintenance services coordinator oversees the contracts um in those various areas. And then the West Covina sportsplex, two maintenance, two workers operating Monday through Thursday, three maintenance workers, two, Tuesday through Fridays. However, when there are tournaments that occur up at the sportsplex, which um we did receive an update from our deputy community services director, Suzie Perez, not too long ago, and she had described the increased activity that has been going on in the way of tournaments, that is those same same maintenance workers who do work overtime to maintain those fields and to keep those operations flowing for the tournaments. I'm going to quickly share with you the organizational chart. Um, you will see that there are full-time and part-time maintenance um staff members that are shown on this chart. Um, it also shows those positions that are open versus those positions that are filled. So here are some visuals for um for your reference of some of the projects that our public works team is capable of, um, cement and asphalt, pothole repair, graffiti and illegal dumping removal, red curb crosswalk street and other painting, traffic signal and traffic lighting repair, sewer and lift station repair, and then contract administration. So we touched a little bit on the contracts that the public works department has in their domain. I'm going to go into a little bit further of um other public works contracts, contracts. So arborists for preventive tree care and maintenance um of the city's urban forest, landscape maintenance for the civic center and city parks, landscape maintenance for six landscape maintenance districts, landscape maintenance of citywide medians, right of ways, commercial zones, sidewalks, tree wells, and other areas. Los Angeles County Agreement for Catch Basin, that is citywide, city sidewalks, inspections and maintenance agreements, janitorial services, elevator maintenance, HVAC maintenance and repair, security and fire alarm monitoring, maintenance and repair, vehicle, heavy equipment, fire apparatus and equipment repair, auto body and paint. And then in addition to that, the um public works department also provides, I would use the word support, um, for some of the other contracts and agreements that we have with cow trans refuse collection and street sweeping. Um, we showcased some of the work that our maintenance team, or excuse me, our public works team is capable of. I'm going to go into providing you with some more details. So again, the concrete work, masonry work, electrical work, traffic signal maintenance, heavy equipment operation, street asphalt repair, trenching, landscaping, and groundskeeping, athletic field renovation and maintenance, painting interior, exterior, street and curbs, welding and fabrication, sewer maintenance, camera, jetting, line repair, lift station repairs, plumbing, splash pad maintenance, drywall and framing. So these staff capabilities that we um have shared with you today, those are the areas that our maintenance workforce is skilled in. So as you'll notice, um, we do have a a skilled Current field maintenance staff, um, there are nine vacancies, there are six dedicated crews of elect, there's a dedicated crew of electrician, which is two, building and maintenance lead worker, excuse me, building maintenance lead, which is one, graffiti abatement, which is two, right away crew, which is two, and sportsplex staff, which is five. So when we have um, when we have additional projects that are outside of the scheduled routine, um, a lot, what tends to happen is that staff members are pulled um to work on some of those additional assignments that are given. Um, in addition to that, there's other things that impact the capacity of the workforce, workforce availability, um, we are limited in class A drivers, unforeseen emergencies, aging infrastructure, deferred maintenance, and then like I hinted at earlier, the special projects. This next slide illustrates just an overview of some of the routine deferred and special projects um that the public works departments in the maintenance realm handles. Um, taking a look at the scheduled maintenance, you can see what's hit on a weekly basis, a daily basis, a bi-monthly basis, um, as available or as needed, and quarterly. Um, the the public works department also highlighted some of the deferred maintenance. These are things um that we have acknowledged that we will be taking taking need to take care of and will get to. And then special projects, those are projects that are as directed by the city manager, um, major special events, and then homeless encampments. Um, and some of the statistics around those. So for example, homeless encampments, um, assisting with those cleanups, twice per month events, taking a look at events as a whole for the calendar year, um, 18 that uh the public works department and maintenance assist with, and then of course, the special projects that are needed um for the betterment of our community. Councilmember Gutierrez, um, I hope that covers your mother. May I request? Mayor Wu, I am open for any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much, Roxanne. Okay, the great report, okay, presentation, and any city council, I know Brian want to ask question, okay, so, and but I want to give out the council the first chance, and maybe councilman, you want to go first? No?
I'll go second.
You go second? Okay, how about Mayor Porter? So you want to give him the first choice? Okay, Brian, go for it. Was that, was that real? No, no, you go for it. You can start the, okay, question.
Okay.
Make it short, okay, make it two.
Yes, uh, great job, Roxanne, on on making this report detailed. I like how you guys, you did this. Um, so yeah, so as I emphasized is that um, we have a lot of hardworking uh public works uh officials working for the city of West Covina. Uh, they've done a remarkable job in maintaining our city, and um I commend them for their work, and I want to find ways that we could save money. Um, you know, there's opportunities, instead of outsourcing a lot of our work, uh, their their work uh in public works, and they have the talent, the capabilities of doing a lot of that that work that were outsourced on various contracts. And if we could find ways to use that money to expand their scope of work, to cover more of the city, especially our school locations, uh, I think that's essential. You know, I had a very productive meeting uh with Melissa from TransTech earlier today, and we spoke about finding ways even for our grants to see if public works is able to uh potentially use funds from there to do the projects themselves. So I just want to emphasize again, uh, the need to uh be able to put money back into public work so so one day we could even expand its abilities, its services, hiring more personnel for that department, and potentially doing promotions within. So, yeah.
Okay, uh, thank you, council member. Uh, I just have a quick question. So currently we have a six vacancy, so we still need another six?
That is correct in various capacities. Um, so the maintenance staff is taking a look at, and when we say the six vacancies, one of the things that your deputy director has promised to the city manager and the city council is to make sure that those positions that we're um really maximizing it to their full potential. So making sure that we align those positions with um the needs that the department um requires. So yes, they're taking a look at those numbers. We're do, we're going through the process of getting those recruitments up in hopes that we can attract um new staff to come and join our team.
Got it. So the recruitment, okay, and I I can understand uh councilmember Gutierrez and emphasize again, 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 many, many times, okay, how can we have a project and something is not too heavy duty? Not rather than skip money out of the contractor right now, we do it in-house, right? That's why you want to say. So let's look into, okay, and when we have a project and like painting uh the street and the the crossroad, okay, all that kind of thing, that that can be easily performed by our step. I think this is what you want to say, and that's how maybe we can save the money rather than go to the contractor and money out the window when I give to our step. If 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 they're capable to do it, if they have enough manpower to do it, we should do it ourselves. Okay, and then Mayor Porter, okay, Lopez, Viado?
Thank you. Um, in reference to that, of course, I don't want to overburden our staff with all the work. Um, but as an extra incentive, um, you know, if it's like overtime, that overtime cost would still be much less than the overall project as an outside. Yes, I am interested in that, um, where they the staff has that ability to choose to do certain projects, or if there is that extra incentive that we can put in where, you know, this project costs this, if you want, you know, take on this additional project, it's an extra bonus, um, if we could do that, um, you know, something to be incentivized because it is, it is already difficult. Um, you know, this presentation that you had, it's it's beautifully created, um, and the visuals, and they do do a lot of work. Um, so I just want to also consider that because then I I just don't want them to burn out and be like, I'm done, you know, we're we're only human.
Uh, exactly. I I think that is how, uh, the, okay, um, council member regarding, uh, want to have a city staff to do it, but we want to make sure the capacity, ability, and uh.
Yes.
Job low, not overwhelming.
Yes.
If they're running around cleaning up here, running around doing this, and then we have, then we have country that didn't do their job and they clean up. So we want to make sure, okay, we have enough of manpower at the same time, and if uh our deputy director, we think this is capable to do it, okay, and the staff want to do it, why not do it?
Yeah, and I think uh, one of the things that Rauhu and 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 Mike have done good is that they're able to schedule things, and and they they be able, by their, by them scheduling these projects, uh, sometimes they're able to rearrange their schedules. So sometimes they're working at night to do like a big project like they did on Vincent and Brent. They those those public works officials worked overnight, and they volunteered for that task, so.
I want to give the chance to councilman Ollie to see something. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, Roxanne, can you describe with specificity our approach for hiring from within West Covina to fill our vacancies within public works, specifically the relationships we have with community colleges or or vocational technical schools, and the extent to which we also reach out to to uh or build a list of eligible candidates of residents of West Covina, so that as we move forward uh by to achieve the objectives that were just described, we also add to that by also by by making sure first to hire from talent right within West Covina itself?
I'm going to back up just a little bit because there's one thing I wanted to point out when we talked about, and and I'm going to get to your question, council member. Um, but there's one thing, when we had mentioned about the six vacancies, we currently do have three in background checks right now. Um, so that number is dwindling down. And then from your point, um, councilman Kontos, what I'm hearing from you is you want to know how we go about recruiting and prioritizing a list of of a skilled workforce, um, and not only looking at those who may have city experience, but also how we can help support students and those in trade and vocational schools. Is that correct?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, what I'm going to share a little bit more about one of the projects in our next presentation that we had with the San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corps. So you'll hear a little bit about that, but one of the things um that we do is we work hand-in-hand with our human resources department. And so when job postings go up, the human resources department um will ask us about um various places that we can help, that we can place some of these job announcements. What I'm hearing from you is that you want um additional focus in those areas that you mentioned. Um, we can absolutely do um place an emphasis in that. I'm looking at our superintendent, um, that as we make those job postings, um, we'll be sure that human resources has the information that they need to post those um at our local community colleges, our trade schools, so that way we can give those local students an opportunity to apply. Um, so I hope that that answers your question.
I I want to add on, okay, recently, I got invited to have a commencement speech for the UEI uh vocational school in West Covina, and they have a lot of very talented graduate, and the and they need job, and they want to work for West Covina. When I went over there and to give the speech, okay, and I can see the the passion, I can see they want to make in their life. We need to give them a chance. Okay, I my suggestion is, since we have a UEI campus at Azusa next to State of Brother, we we should post, okay, the job into their student affair. I remember when I was in college, I went to find job at a student affair. So if we can post, okay, to their say, West Covina looking for this and that, 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 they have electrician, they have a a and a criminal justice, they have a clinical, okay, they have a lot of talented graduate, have a. of talented graduate, have diploma. So I think I saw them, they all want to, I sell West Covina, I sold it, okay, they love it, and they want to move to West Covina, they want to walk into our city, and they want to work for the city. And I told them we have a job. So thank you so much for councilman, okay, Kento regarding the suggestion.
Thank you. And real quick to highlight the report and that mentioned, the unemployment rate in the West Covina is 5.6%. So everything we can do to lower that number by hiring from within, that would be great.
Yeah, we want to go to national 3%.
Yes.
Okay, 5.5 is too high.
Too high.
Make sure, okay, we can give them job, okay, young people need job. Okay, and all the city council, okay, Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, just like Mayor Wu and councilmember Kontos stated, sorry, I was walking.
That's okay.
But yeah, I think it's very important that we could reach out, actually create an account, they actually have an account, I know for USC, to do job postings with their career center, because there's a lot of college kids, especially from USC and UCLA, who are hungry for a new job, or right out of earning a bachelor's degree or a master's degree. So this would be a great opportunity to come to a city like ours, so, yeah.
Okay. If no other question, I want to move on to next agenda, next presentation. Okay, everybody, okay? Okay, thank you so much, my colleague. Okay, let's go to number 14, then we can go home. Okay, so median beautification, who's going to present this?
Mayor Roxanne Lermert, Assistant City Manager.
Okay, thank you. You're working a double overtime.
The chair, if I may, give me just a minute to get this one up. So we're going to walk back in time just a tiny bit, and it was a time not too long ago, back in 2021, when the city of West Covina entered into an agreement with the San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corps. So to your point, Councilman Kontos, you were talking about providing students with opportunities, and this is one way that the city of West Covina provided local students, the local youth, with opportunities to, to work for the city in a way. So the city of West Covina entered into a cooperative agreement with the San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corps, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. The agreement was approved, was approved by the city council in a five to zero vote back in October of 2021. The priority was seven identified medians with a total of 86 planting areas that would be considered a city beautification project, utilizing the city's budgeted funds in its fiscal year 2021, 2022 CIP budget for job training utilizing ARPA funds. Under the agreement, the San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corps produced construction documents, supervised and trained staff, or excuse me, trains court members ages 18 to 26 to work in crews to design, plant, build, establish, and maintain sustainable public landscapes across West Covina.
Yeah, I smell that.
Yeah.
A skunk.
Skunk inside our chamber?
No. We're really hoping that's a skunk.
In the ceiling, probably.
Let's continue, okay. I have stuffy nose, I can smell anything. Yeah.
I apologize. So we're talk about the priority medians. There were nine medians on not, on Grand Avenue that were identified, 23 medians along Azusa Avenue, 10 medians along Glendora Avenue, 10 medians along Vincent Avenue, Sunset Avenue was 17 medians, Amar Road were 15 medians, and West Covina Parkway were two medians. And what I would like to emphasize with the project that we, the beautification project that we were under contract for with the Conservation Corps, not all of these medians were part of the scope of that agreement. So again, these priority areas were identified as part of the beautification project. And while the San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corps took a portion of it, they did not take all of it. So there are still identified areas for not only immediate improvement, but opportunities in the future. So at first, we're going to talk a little bit about an identified area for media improvement. That would be the Amar median. The city is working with a contractor, Brightview actually, to plant and fill the median on Amar west of Azusa to Brentwood Avenue. This project is scheduled to commence in March of 2025, as it is the optimal time of year for planting. The plants that have been identified for those medians are the box crate myrtle, lantanas, and day lilies. And so there are still some other opportunities for improvements on the following thoroughfares, Grand Avenue, Azusa Avenue, Glendora Avenue, Vincent Avenue, Sunset, Amar, and West Covina Parkway. When we talk about Azusa Avenue.
And I'm sorry, okay, Roxanne, how about Nongales? Nongales, some portion is belong to West Covina. It's a big street.
Yeah. The Conservation Corps did not work on this, but we can add that to an area of opportunities to improve upon, so absolutely we can do that.
And also, okay, Valley Boulevard.
Yes, we can add that as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So to, to your point that you had brought up earlier, Councilmember Gutierrez, taking a look at the staff members and our skilled workforce, what we're hoping to accomplish is as we go through each of these areas that are identified for improvement, we're looking at what is going to be the most feasible as far as having staff versus having a contractor. In speaking with our deputy director, he did assure me that he is working on plans for those medians so that he can have staff work on them. One of the, one of the medians that he, or one of the areas that he has identified for a project would be, we call it the triangle, that's right over here off of Vincent Avenue, it's that triangle portion. Yes, Councilwoman Diaz is nodding her head, yes, she's familiar with it. And so Deputy Director Alvarado is designing plans for that, and his intent is to have staff members work on that area. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Okay, city council, anybody have a question?
Yep.
Before Brian, anybody want to go first? And council, councilman, you want to go first? I know you got like a chit chat, like no tomorrow, this is the last one. Okay, you want to go first question? Otherwise, I want to give to Brian.
Oh, what, it's, thank you so much, I really appreciate it, Roxanne. So with, with the beautification, how are you going to be with immediate action steps? How are you adding students now? You talked about the California Conservation Corps before, but how do you bring student involvement now to sort of cultivate the pipeline for getting these different beautification projects done?
One of the challenges, and I'm going to be frank with you, one of the challenges that we had with the Conservation Corps is that the project scope was a challenge for the Conservation Corps. I think that the students and the staff were definitely well-meaning in trying to abide by the scope and to fulfill their requirements of the agreement. So one of the conversations that we have had are other ways that we can use the Conservation Corps into projects that they, that are more aligned with, with their skill set. And some of it we had talked about was brush clearance. We've also talked about some other cleanup work and some replanting work, to replant some plants and some trees that may have been taken down. So we're working on identifying areas and then perhaps working with the city manager and re-engaging with the Conservation Corps, perhaps another drop development type organization. So that is our plan in the immediate, those are the initial conversations that we have. But again, we will be working with the city manager in order to move forward with that.
Okay, thank you. And councilmember?
Yes. So how much is this contract costing for Amar medium?
It is through Brightview. The cost of that work is approximately $8,000.
$8,000?
Correct.
And what is, what is it, does it include new speaker system? I'm assuming not, right?
It is not.
So just new plants?
Plants, some repairs that need to be made. There's a little bit of hardscape there as well, no hardscape on that one, okay, no hardscape, plant, some repairs, that's it.
When speaking to Raul, he said that they were capable of doing a lot of this work. So if we spend, I mean, depending on the work, technically 8,000 for a contractor will technically cost us probably about 2,000 just for the supplies, I'm assuming, so.
Your.
Big difference, yeah.
Your point is absolutely taken, and I think using the Amar area as an example, you know, that was definitely a catalyst for Raul and the Public Works Department to take a look at the other medians and the other areas for, that were identified as opportunities for improvement, to develop plans and to schedule staff. It comes down really to scheduling. I mean, I appreciate you applauding and giving kudos to the staff, actually all of the councilmembers, but it comes down to scheduling.
Yeah, yeah, so. Yeah, so I understand the scheduling they have, and they've been, Raul's been successful in accomplishing those schedules. So it may take us a couple more weeks or days to get this project done compared to hiring a contractor, but at least we're going to be saving money.
Councilmember?
Yeah.
Really quick, I want to add on what you say, I agree with you, what do you say? Okay, I just want to add on. I think we should request the city, okay, to have our Public Works Department to review, okay, this is a requirement. Okay, first, if they cannot do it, then we have no choice, go to contractor. But at least give our deputy director a chance to review the project. So I think in that way, we don't miss any chance and just throw money out the window. Because we have, already have a labor, we pay for their salary.
Yeah, yeah.
So we, exactly correct. Why we not just buy the, okay, and those plan and plan it?
Yeah. And, and I want to make sure that, and this goes, I guess, to Paulina, is that we emphasize the use of saving money, and we must accomplish that. We're not here just to talk and raise our, our voice. We want to save money, we want to be able to expand these services to other parts of the city.
Councilmember, I think we can put a request.
Yeah. I think I already did, but.
Yeah, so we, we can request all the project, let, okay, let our deputy director to survey. If we can do it in-house, then we do it in-house.
Yep, okay, I'll add it to my council.
City attorney, shall we do it over here, or Mother May I?
That sounds like it's a clear request, unless, is anybody opposed?
No, nobody opposed. I think we want to save money.
There's clear direction there.
Okay, thank you.
The direction is understood. We'll revisit the project with Deputy Director Alvarado, and we will report those findings to the city manager, and we will proceed accordingly.
Exactly. So, so go to our Public Work first, okay, and if they can do it, then let's do it, save the money, and if they cannot do it, it's too big and too complicated, okay, we need more, then we can go to the contractor, okay, and go to RVP. Okay, and any others, go ahead.
Yeah. And so, yeah, so we have this one, Amor, that you identified, so I would like to know, Paulina, if you could let us know what, if, if our Public Works get that job done. Then there was other mediums I mentioned on Vincent Avenue that runs in between Councilwoman Leti Lopez Viado's district and my district on Vincent Avenue, also on Sunset Avenue. Raul indicated to me that they're, they're more than capable of doing those projects too, that will cost, save our city millions and millions of dollars, so.
I will request.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I want to make sure that things get done, because later on in council comments, I'm going to mention things that have not gotten done due to my council request, that were had deadlines, and I guess we're just ignoring them or not fulfilling them.
Yep.
Things have to get done.
Got it, thank you so much. So clear direction from the city council, okay, any project, median, the vegetation, okay, plan and foot all this, okay, beautiful plan over there, clean up, and let's go to our Public Work first. Okay, so I think, okay, any other thing? You guys okay? Okay, and then let's move on. Thank you, Roxanne, thank you, okay, for your presentation.
You're welcome.
At least we have a very clear direction. We, let's go to our Public Work, let the deputy director to review it first, okay, if we can do it, then we do it in-house. Okay, and let's go to the, okay, councilmember report. What, I guess my, okay, not yet, we're not going home yet. We still, sorry, okay, we're not done yet, okay. Okay, councilmember comment and or councilmember request.
Go ahead. Just wanted to report to everybody that because of the relationship I've been building with AT&amp;T, they have put in a request for laptop computers to be given to our, our senior center. So we don't know about the status of that, they told me they're going to let me know, but I'm really, really excited because of wanting to bridge the digital divide, that was something I worked on for a little bit, and it just came out of nowhere, like fell out of the sky. So let's just pray that it's going to work out, but if it does, that will mean that seniors who don't have computers will soon have access at no expense to us. So wanted to report that, thank you.
Good job, okay, and do we have other report?
I think we're at council request, no?
Yes, council, okay, let's go council request.
Yeah. And then I have.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so the first council request, so I have to, we already approved this, but I'm going to make it more, more specific and clearer on the, some safety enhancements. So I make it, I make it, I want to, I would like to give direction to the city manager to install speed feedback radar monitors, which is a speed, the speed signs, the monitor.
The flashing?
Yes, the flashy ones on North Orange Avenue and Swainy, also on Merced between Orange and Sunset, and I would like red and blue strobe lights to be put on them instead of orange ones regardless of compliance with FHWA regulations.
Okay, I have no idea what you're talking about, but, but TransTech's right there, okay, our traffic committee, right, traffic engineer over there. So maybe, okay.
So I, I spoke to them earlier today, they'll be able to explain it, but they don't recommend, they can't recommend to the city red and blue strobes. So that's why I had to do a council request that specifically says regardless of federal highway regulations that we as, as a city are directing.
I like that, okay. So, so I think this is Mother May I, okay?
It's a direction like you gave for Cortez.
Correct, correct, right, but that one is yellow flashing with, but not a red and blue.
Yeah.
I don't know, it would be too colorful like Christmas.
No, 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 same, same brightness, it's just red and blue. Irvendale uses it, other cities use it.
Is that okay, the residential street?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Maybe engineer can explain to us, then we can move on. So you can explain to us why is that, is that okay for residential will be too, okay, because people living over there, I do not want to disturb, but we just want to slow down the traffic so we don't, people don't have accident, a kid himself.
The speed feedback signs can be placed on residential streets as being requested and discussed here. The councilmember did allude to a discussion we had previously. Per the Federal Highway Administration, FHWA, they've issued a notice that the request that he's making specifically, the blue and red flashing lights are not compliant with the FHWA.
It's not compliant.
No, well, so.
It's, it's a risk management issue, we have.
How about the typical yellow flashing, that's okay?
That is, that's correct.
Okay, so I would think about we just do that, the yellow.
No, 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 so it's, it's, it's no difference in the orange ones, it's just the color.
Correct.
So nothing, it's no, so I'm mentioning a park and a school site.
Understand, but he just mentioned the federal, okay, and the traffic, they did not recommend.
That's in regards to certain grants, like in California, the all, Caltrans had to remark yellow stripping on the freeway, you remember on the freeway?
Councilmember, understand, just don't want to spend the money and then we have to remove it.
No, you won't have to remove it.
We, we don't know, okay, but based on.
Are you saying that we're going to have to remove? No.
He's saying it's not, that's not recommended.
He, because he can't, he can't recommend it. He, we went and discussed, I went on a discussion with Melissa and them earlier today, and they specifically told me how to do the council requests.
I got it, okay, and Mayor Poten?
Yeah, I was going to ask, is the reason for this color just to make it look like it's police?
It, it has shown that other cities that have it, and even Irvendale's police one they have that's temporary up on their streets, it shows that cars will slow down when they see red and blue embers flashing as their states slow down speed, over the speed limit, whatever it says. It has shown to be. Uh, it has shown to be more effective.
Okay, Rosario, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. So you, you mentioned that it was a temporary fix, or is it?
No, it's, uh, it's, it's, uh, yeah, so it's, so one location's right in front of, uh, Orangewood Park, right there next to the high school, and then the other location is based upon red, actually about forty residents that I walked, it's my, it's in my district area.
Right.
They have specifically demanded from me this request.
Okay.
When I was elected.
Uh, Mayor Poten, okay, hold on, you.
I'm not done.
Okay, let's, let her finish, please.
So, you know, we do have a lot of, a lot of streets that have speeding issues, and one of them is Vine. And I've been trying to figure out what it is that we can do with Vine.
Yeah.
And, um, everyone jumps to speed bumps, and obviously we can't do that, especially on Vine. Um, so, I mean, is this a remedy that?
I will, I will like to also include Vine Avenue to my council requests.
Uh.
We're gonna have them all over.
Yes, yeah.
We need.
It's very effective, I, I have.
I, I got it, we, we want to save life.
Beverly Hills has it.
Uh, okay, go ahead, Mayor Poten.
Thank you, I mean, it is a cool concept, and I, I can see the benefits of it, but my question is, if that is installed, is that something that, as we mentioned, they're gonna force us to remove it?
So it's not a case of being forced to remove, I, I, let me.
Or penalty, or anything of that, Nick?
If I can provide just a real brief explanation.
Please.
Federal Highway Administration oversees the manual on uniform traffic control devices, the MUTCD. The state has adopted the MUTCD, and through the vehicle code, we, the city, are obligated to follow these rules. So this specific, um, feedback sign with the blue and red flashing lights, FHWA has issued a letter that it's non-compliant. So my advice in the role of city engineer is I cannot recommend to you that you should go out and install a non-compliant sign. However, you're the governing board for the city, you have the authority to direct staff to go out and install traffic control devices. It's a risk management question of should we or should we not install something that we know, because I've advised that it's not compliant.
And what is the consequences for that, and what makes it a risk? I mean, that's why you said, you know, it's a, no, you said risk management, but what makes it a risk, and I just wanted to know what the consequences were.
So I can address it on the engineering side, um, I would defer to this.
The attorney?
If he would speak up in a moment.
The attorney, okay, if this non-compliant device, if they have accident, will city get sued?
Well, we're out here in open session, that's probably a discussion for closed session, let's talk about liability.
Yes.
Well, this is, uh, yeah, I mean, it's a mother may I, so we'd like to move this.
So, yeah, it's, it's just a council request, uh, a council direction request, uh, and other cities have it.
Got it.
Uh, it, it's, it's not an enforceable offense, so you won't, the city won't be fined for it. Now, when it comes to funding, like if we were to seek a grant specifically for this little thing, we wouldn't get money for it, but if we're gonna pay for it ourselves, or I'll even find the sponsor for those three lights, those three things on Vine and these two streets, then there's nothing in the, in the book saying a city is prohibited its body, like you said, the body can make up, make decisions that benefit its residents and prevent killings and deaths.
I got it, okay, and, and, uh, I don't know if we can do this, okay, and I prefer compliance, okay, I want to follow the law.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I agree, actually, I, I would prefer compliance, because, uh, if, if anything happens, I realize that there's opinions, I mean, if it's a mother may I request to look into the recommendations, that's fine, but you know, we, it's good to look, be innovative, but also we need to make sure that there are any, mother may I within this context, uh, 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 address the matter of risk management, because I would hate for anyone to sue us and say, I'm just worried about that.
It's not in the engineers' preview to see risk management, it's city ma- it's city attorney's, uh, preview to tell us that there's a risk associated, so why do, why do other cities have it?
Well, I don't know, but it's not compliant, the, the Federal Highway Administration says it's not compliant.
You don't understand what that, that's just a regu- that's just a advisory.
Okay, 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 uh, okay, Brian, continue, no, I'm sorry, Mayor Poten, you, you can argue to hit it just for a device, just for the color, please.
Pretty much to end this, he's requesting a mother may I request, so that we can gather all the information, and it could be brought to the council, so that we understand and can weigh out the pros and cons of the situation, and then we can make the final decision then.
Exactly.
But I'd like to move forward with.
Yeah, let's move forward, please don't argue over here, okay, let's move.
So let me amend my request, uh, let's go ahead as a direction, just like we did for Cortez Avenue. Uh, let's go ahead and do with orange lights for now, and then interimly, uh, let's figure out this red and blue issue.
Yes, 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 yeah, thank you so much.
I'm gonna do two different requests, uh, I'm gonna request that, uh, does Vine Avenue already have one, uh, Rosario?
No, just get.
Yeah, so if we could, if we could do it for Cortez, we could do it for these streets.
Uh, not, not only Cortez, I think the Aymar and the Westport, okay, they, they three per- three person killed, okay, with motorcycle.
Yeah, yeah.
We need to put that flashing speeding, so slow down the traffic on Aymar. So when people slow down and ready to go left turn, okay, they see the flashing light, so let, we need to install right away.
So my, my point is, if people are dying, we find money where we want to find money.
Okay.
I mean, we got, we got something done at Cortez today, so my council request is to include Aymar and Restport, Orange Avenue and Swainy, and Merced between Orange and, between Orange and, between Orange and Sunset Avenue on Merced.
And Cortez.
Orange strobe lights, uh, and I, I want this project done within a month.
Yeah, and, okay, uh, who, okay. Yeah, he, he mentioned already, okay, let's, let's move on, very good, okay, thank you for compromise about this. Okay, but at least we can do a compliance with the device, let's put this on, and then we later will figure out this thing, but at least let's move on.
So that's a contrary direct, uh, contrary direction to get this done within a month.
Thank you so much for your input, appreciate it, okay, I think this is important for us to know, understand what is compliant, what is not. Thank you so much, sir, okay, and, uh, another mother may I, you have more, go ahead.
And then I do a council request to have the city attorney's office brief the council on, um, uh, the requirements and regulations surrounding, uh, the red and blue strobes on uh, speed radar signs in other cities, and, and, and what federal regulations dictate and state regulations, but also why, uh, did those cities install it regardless of what those advisories say. I would like this presented by, uh, wherever, February, by the first meeting of April.
So, uh, city attorney to give us a close action regarding potential issue compared with other city, and that's why you.
Well, I'm not, I'm not talking about, there's no liability for us, I'm just asking for a general, so I want it done in public, the public during a, uh, uh, staff presentation, a staff, uh, reporting.
It's like you say, we need to do close action first?
I'm not asking for a risk assessment, I'm asking what, what.
Yeah, we already move on.
So you guys, well, they.
We move on the yellow one.
They, well, they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to stick by what their, what their license requires them to do. That's why it's the city attorney's job to tell us what other cities are doing and not doing.
Okay, uh, should we do in the close section? Okay, let's move on, okay, what's next?
Yeah, so are we gonna do a close session or public city? You're the city attorney, Tom.
We're gonna discuss any liability, it should be done in closed session.
Okay, let's do a closed session.
It can be open session.
Okay, the, the next, okay, it's mother may I.
Um, let's see. The next one is a, um, uh, so there was a council request that an RFP for Down North Day be posted by the first week, early, uh, February. Um, we are now in the third week of February, and the city manager was, has not been in compliant, compliance with that direction, so I would like for the Down North Day Park RFP to be posted, uh, this week, because it was supposed to be posted to, uh, last week.
City manager, can, can you answer that?
Yeah.
Yes, it's currently being reviewed right now, so that we can post it, there had to be some changes made to the crit- uh, evaluation criteria, and that's why, um, it hasn't been posted.
So when you can post it?
I believe we're trying to get it up as soon as possible to try to meet that deadline, um, but by the end of the week.
It expired a deadline, you're two weeks late.
Okay, SAP, when, give us a date, please.
We'd like to get it done by the end of the week.
Thank you.
The end of the week, you sure? Are you sure? You want to do it Monday, or you sure it's the end of the week? There's a Thursday.
Yeah, yeah, she's, yeah, because it's easy, it's just a repost, yeah.
You can repost, you ready?
To be safe, we could say Monday.
Okay, Monday is better.
Are you gonna still be able to meet the April deadline?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you, thank you, city manager, uh, what's next?
I wanna direct the city manager, uh, to work with the assistant city manager, Roxanne Lerman, and contact Edison uh, to install overhead lights behind the alleyway on the historic downtown West Covina area that currently is seeing an increase in crime.
And still lights on what street?
Uh, you remember, we have a shooting behind the Glendora.
Alleyway.
Alleyway, and it's very dark.
So.
Or possible, we need some street light, and then Edison have to. So that's a.
I spoke to Edison, Edison says that, uh, Roxanne is the contact for, uh, SoCal Edison, so if we could do that request to Edison, to tell them that we want lights installed there, uh, whatever meters poles they have.
You want a date?
Um, if you could report back, uh, uh, she has to, it's a, it's a, it's an email process to happen.
Huh, excuse me, hey, hey, please, okay, hey, please, okay, we almost done, let us finish our meeting, please, thank you, sir. Okay, appreciate, let's help each other, please, okay, and Roxanne, okay, uh, when you can see, you can uh, give us the, the, okay, about Edison?
Let me cor- if, if I may, I'll coordinate with the city manager and with Edison, and, um, we'll work with engineering to see what we can do. Um, I don't want to give you a date, because I do need to have those conversations with the city manager and with Edison.
Yeah, so if you could, if you could give us an, I guess, just a general update, um, during staff reporting, uh, for the second meeting of March.
Okay.
Because I know Edison did tell me that it's, it's a process, so if you could reach out to that, that one contact, I think you have, and then do the email process they require, you know.
Very good, next.
Okay, the next one. I would like to bring back the item the planning commission voted on at the last meeting regarding West Covina Hospital, and send notices to the public within a one thousand feet radius, um, to also include reports from the West Covina Police Department, West Covina Fire Department, and West Covina Health.
Um, okay, this one just recently, last week, being approved by the planning, uh, department, it requests four out of five city council to bring it back, and then later on, since we approved the, okay, in the future will be only two. And I will support to bring back to the council to give the detail about this psychiatric, okay, facility with seventy-four bed, and with the parking issue and the disservice issue, and I think we need to have a police and department, a fire department, including our public health, to give us the report regarding what will be the community impact uh, for this big facility coming to West Covina, so I will support this, any, any other city council, uh, the objection?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Um, I, I understand we need to bring this up, I just wanted to stay for the record that, um, um, I'm, I'm a big supporter of, of mental health, and there, there are some, some things that are, are being described as to whether or not it's going to result in people uh, ending up on the streets of West Covina and so forth, so, um, I think that, that this would be a good thing uh, for the residents to know, because, uh, you know, we, we have to really find a way to be, to, to optimize support, so I think that if we move, uh, forward to make sure that residents know about it, it'll optimize the chance to educate the the community about what are the options are, and then, and then to support mental, mental health support uh, for, for people who really need it in this community, and for, to give, uh, them an opportunity to make sure, to assure residents of West Covina that they, this will not result in people uh, with mental health conditions being released onto the streets of West Covina, um, and also to, for them to provide a, a strong record of their past performance and, um, uh, of, in this space, that way they can show and assure the, the, the people of West Covina that, that not only, um, is this, could this, could this be a good thing, but also that it, it would make sure that residents will stay safe because of the assurances provided, uh, as, as shared during the commission meeting, uh, about making sure that there are safeguards in place to make sure that the people are discharged at, at either another facility uh, outside of West Covina or with family members far away, you know, all of that just has to be discussed and described in detail, and with this, it'll give, uh, them an opportunity to prepare a really extensive whatever wants, they want to share, so that way the community can, can, can know with certainty, and that we can see whatever the possibilities are, and just sort of see whatever they say, and then, and then hopefully that, you know, then, that we can go from there.
I, I think councilmen, okay, and all you can tell, let's exactly, I think city council want to have a open dialogue and a hearing, okay, I want to understand this facility, uh, we need mental, uh, health service, but we want to make sure, okay, and they provide, uh, the service that, okay, in need of our community and all the safety net, we like another safety net, since we get elected, we need to take this as a good face, okay, to diligent, to review, okay, and open up for our resident have input, okay, and to review this facility and make sure, okay, what they want to bring into our city is positive and provide a service. Okay, and not just you, using the major age money, okay, and, uh, to milk the system, but we want to make sure they're coming in as a good facility and provide good service, I think that's the reason we want to have this, okay, hearing, okay, so we want to invite. That's why I, I support council, uh, member regarding one thousand feet, because the one block is all thousand of residential, and we want them to understand, and they can come over and participate about, okay, this, uh, this, uh, facility coming to their community, yeah, go ahead, council member?
Yeah, just to, uh, I mean, according to what you're saying, Mayor Ru, I'm not saying that I'm against or for this project. All I'm saying is that, uh, this is a project within District One that includes a psychiatric hospital, and I think our residents have the right to be informed, and we're gonna have a, a opportunity for the applicant to discuss their proposal and, and for constituents within the community, uh, to have a chance to speak on the matter, that we can hear them.
Very good, this is a mother may I, so, uh, anybody against this? Okay, five zero, okay, and, uh, put agenda and bring back, and we want the detail and, uh, have, uh, the applicant come in to give us a, a presentation, at the same time, we want the police file and the database to see, okay, what their suggestion, so we have all-rounded, okay, discussion, and, uh, and even uh, I, I watched the planning department, uh, the planning, planning commissioner talking about the parking, but they not safe, the, the parking right across street with the exit coming through, so we'll make sure that nobody get hurt when they walk, okay, and to the, to the hospital, so anyway, uh, let's bring it back, and other, you done?
No.
No? Okay, let's continue, we have all night.
No, and the next one will be a council request to change the hiring requirements for all city positions to high school or equivalent proven work experience, to a high, having a requirement of a high school diploma or equivalent proven work experience to align with federal and state hiring practices.
It's led federal and state requirements?
They, they have, uh, you could use job experience as a way to, uh, attain state and federal jobs.
Uh, okay, and, uh, Mayor Poten?
Is this for all positions, or?
No, 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 job.
Jobs.
Uh, the job, the director.
Yeah.
Okay, the staff, everybody, this.
Yeah, for all, for all city.
Employee.
Yeah, usually it falls under the director positions and cities, different positions within, so it's, I'm, I'm making it broad, but usually, it's only gonna cover a handful of positions within the city. So.
I always support this, okay, I think we cannot discriminate people, okay, you have college degree, not, no college degree. I think a lot of people, and, uh, okay, already proven, uh, they are honest, okay, loyal, and, uh, excellent, uh, okay, work, I met so many staff, okay, I, I think we should open it up, okay, more of, uh, okay, opportunity for people, and at the same time, if they want to do another college degree during their private tenure, it's another issue, but we now restrict the people, so, so I always support it, and, and you other want to discuss?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Well, while I'm supportive of the broad notion, there are certain positions, I'm, I'm worried about the word all, I mean, I don't know how that would work, but there are certain positions that do require college degrees and that must, so without definition, it can be dangerous, it could be sloppy the way it's, I don't know how we could refine that, and maybe the city.
Correct, so maybe I'll exempt, uh, the finance department. Finance. Finance position.
Maybe, this is mother may I, this is mother may I.
We could bring it back, yeah, it's a.
This is mother may I, I think.
It should bring it back, yeah.
And to bring it back, and we can discuss.
For city staff to identify positions.
This is now we're gonna approve it.
Okay, thank you for clarifying, I was gonna say, we can identify positions where we think that we could remove that.
Okay, good.
Exactly, yeah, so.
We're not blanked right now.
Yeah, yeah, so realistically, for example, director positions like for public works, or, or, or city manager positions, or assistant city manager positions, those positions align.
City manager, we don't need a college degree.
Yeah, exactly, so they align, they align with federal and state standards that a lot of directors within the federal government don't have a college degree, they, the government recognizes those who have a proven track record and years and years of.
Yeah, even the PhD degree, not as you can run the city.
Yep.
Okay, okay, especially, I think job, job, job experience is really, okay, and showing, but again, this will be under the city staff, city manager to hire people, but bring it back, bring it back, so we can discuss.
Yes.
Okay, and uh, it's okay?
Yes, better.
Anybody against this? Also, so it's a suggestion to city looking to the qualification, okay, and for all the job, okay, requirement. Okay, uh, next one?
Yes, uh, I make a concert request to change the uh, the code, uh, I don't know if it's a code or policy, I, I forgot, but um to change the policy for removal of a commissioner, uh, to change it, currently it has to be four council members for cause, I would like to change it for it to be four council members with or without cause to remove a commissioner in general.
Uh, Mayor Poten?
Uh, isn't it right now, I mean, if the council person appoints, then the council person can also remove?
Uh, the council person who actually appoints or appoints a position also has the capability to remove that person without or without cause, uh, this will give it, give all, a four-member uh body, also the opportunity, currently four members can remove a commissioner for cause um only. What, what I'm asking for is to change it to with or without cause.
Okay, uh, I got it, okay, I, I think four out of five is needed, okay, so, because, because we are not here forever, in the future in city council with three majority can just remove a commissioner, that's, that's just gonna create chaos.
Yes.
I, I think the four out of five, okay, but I don't know with cause, without cause, why is it different, uh, city attorney, maybe you can.
Yeah, currently, right now, the, the council, the council member that appoints can remove. If uh, there's a vacancy on city council, um, then three council members can uh.
Appoint.
Or replace, okay, but if the council's full and they're desiring to remove uh someone else's appointment to planning commission, you can have four, it says, it's currently four out of five with cause, and it lists the cause, I, I believe it's um.
It's for any commission, but yeah.
Yeah, there, there, it's, it's pretty specific, it's pretty difficult to do, so the request, as I understand it, is to remove with cause, so with or without cause, or, or this vote.
Uh, four out of five would be very difficult, for sure.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we should keep four out of five, okay, so we, so in that way, three out of five is easy.
Mm-hmm.
Four out of five won't be that easy.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I, I oppose removing four, I mean, there has to be cause, otherwise it's going to be, I mean, it gets to be really tenuous, we go down a slippery slope.
Okay, got it, okay, and how about Rosario? Okay. You don't care? Okay, you say either way, and Mayor Poten? Either way? Okay, 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 and uh, do we have a second, this is vocal, please?
Uh, council, who was the second?
Uh, who's one second, Rosario one second, okay, uh, Mayor Poten one second, you second, so we have a motion moved by uh the mother may I from you regarding the four out of five, and with, we, with low cause, I don't think it will happen, but, but, okay, uh, okay, no call, please?
And a second by Councilwoman Diaz.
Yes.
Councilman Contos?
No.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem La Paz Viero?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, oh, you got four.
Four one.
Yeah, four one, okay, ooh, we already said the example. Somebody would be in trouble.
No.
Okay, uh, next agenda, please, uh, next mother may I?
Uh, yeah, um, I just wanna make a concert request to uh recommend that uh Student Government Day also include Nogales High School because in District um.
Uh, I, I wanna say this, this is not our event.
Yeah, yeah, just a recommendation, so.
Okay, and this is uh Kiwanee, so, so Kiwanee need to contact them, we just a host, okay, we just a a place for them to come.
Yeah, yeah.
So how they organize, we have no say.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you can say recommended.
It's a recommendation.
And I know, I know Roxanne is a member of Kiwanee, maybe you can uh mention to uh Brad that Nogales maybe needs some love, because they say he's a, he's, he's school.
Yeah, I, I, I grew up in West Covina, and I went to Nogales High School, so uh, in, in, so I know for.
Got it.
There's residents in District Four and Five that go to Nogales High School.
Yes, okay, and let's have a recommended to Brad, see if possible, you can invite, today, he invited South Hill Academy and uh, the Mount Sac, okay, Academy, that is, that has never happened before.
Yeah, it's good.
So maybe next year we can include in Nogales, okay, I think the kid over there maybe want to join to see the government. Okay, uh, next one, I hope it's over.
And? Next one is make a concert request, there's nothing left.
Thank you so, thank you so much, but, but, but a lot of things pretty, okay, and uh, good, good point, and other uh requests?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, I need some, the assistance of the assistant city clerk, um, so the first motion uh that I'd like to make has, has to, they're, they're both with regard to the Health Department, and the first one uh deals with essential, essentially transparency, with just making sure that any expenditure with the Health Department um, that's, that, that could happen, that it needs to come before the council. Uh, that's essentially it, but I'd like to ask for the record for the mother uh may I that I wrote to be read by the assistant city clerk.
Councilman Contos, first mother may I is, in a spirit of full transparency for the public, I ask that the city council place for approval on the agenda of the next meeting scheduled for Tuesday, March 4th, 2025, a resolution to establish as formal policy the need for all new proposed expenditures relating to the establishment of the West Covina Health Department to be presented to the city council for review and consideration for adoption. By intent, this necessarily means public disclosure of full details, including specific pros and cons of actions as proposed by staff. In that spirit, to continue optimizing transparency, it must be noted that any further budgetary reallocations relating to the Health Department not occur until after this agenda's item is discussed during an open session of the council.
Uh, you want to, every detail on the Health Department, you want them bring us to approve?
When it comes to expenditures, whenever there's new money that's coming in for, for use, let's say, if there's money that, 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 uh.
Uh, currently, based on the report, we have about $90,000 left.
Is that outside of the current contract?
Yes, outside the current contract, if there's, if there's any new expenditures, it's not touching the current expenditure.
The current left already $90,000, so if we want to increase, okay, the budget, then they need to bring to city council for approval, that's why you say, right?
Yeah, I just wanna formalize that.
Oh, of course, but you, but that was fine, okay, anything want to increase the budget, need to come to the city council, that's for sure, but currently, what they spend on $90,000, you want a detail?
No, no, not about, I mean, I mean, that's, it's already dedicated, but I'm talking about any new.
Oh, yes, okay, uh, anything if we want to increase, or we have a grant this and that, and then we disclose to the council, to the public.
Yes, then we can, we can discuss here.
Of course, okay, and uh, anybody against that? No, no, nothing, okay?
Thank you, and then the second motion, and it's my last, uh, for, with regard to this.
You sure, you want more?
I, he, my colleague, our colleague has a record there, the second one has to do.
It's almost midnight now.
Oh, wow, we're, we're not quite the record, but we're getting there.
Yeah, hurry up.
But the, the second one, one has, has to do with um establishing uh that, that no money from and this is in support of a fellow council colleague who also, I think had brought it up previously, that no money be allocated from the general fund to the Health Department, uh, and that we set that as policy. So with that, I'd like to ask the assistant city clerk to read the second mother may I.
The second mother may I from Councilman Contos. I ask that the city council place for approval on the agenda of the next meeting scheduled for Tuesday, March 4th, 2025, a resolution to establish as formal policy that no fund shall be diverted from the general fund, either through direct or non-direct means, to continue financing of the Health Department, or any limited excuse me, or any aspects of its potential operation or further consideration. To be clear, this expressly includes, but is not limited to dedication of financial resources through TransTech or any other contractor or subcontractor to cover for staffing, office, and other expenses. The movement of funds from different accounts to cover expenses relating to the Health Department, or reimbursement of businesses' expenses, or to any or all persons who provide in-kind support whose expenditures exceed the amount already dedicated to Health Department work as previously allocated from the American Rescue Plan Act. Funds also as laid out in the agenda packet distributed in connection with tonight's meeting. To be clear, this necessarily entails that particularly since the council already committed the last of ARPA money to other purposes in December 2024. Out of any ARPA funding that still remains unspent, other than what has already been earmarked for the Health Department and related work, additional allocation of ARPA money is not authorized.
This is a long mother may I.
Sorry, sorry.
I feel like I'm reading the accent. Could you repeat three times, so we can go to midnight? Okay, uh, and uh, okay, so basically, uh, council man Kento, okay, uh, just say uh, you request no general fund, no, not any, not even consideration, this and that, that's why you request.
Saying that, that, that no, that we set as policy, that no money be moved from.
I, I, I will be absolutely against this.
Understand, but I.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is this, okay, if we need anything, it's still need to bring to city council to approval. So city council can discuss why we need it, if we decline, then they don't get it. But not a blanket, okay, forever, for sure, not going to touch general fund. Okay, if we need maybe $2,000 on general fund for some issue, and not going, not going to touch this and that, but anyway, and no discussion, okay, I against this, okay, so uh, you, you have a mother may I, okay, and, okay, it's forbidden to use any general fund for uh, the, the, the Health Department, that's why you request.
Yes.
Okay, and uh, so, uh, do, do we have a second?
I'm understanding the request.
You just say, okay.
That, are you saying?
No general fund be touched, okay, in case we need something, and that we cannot do as a policy, but what I'm saying is this, we can basically bring, okay, if they have a request, to bring to us to discuss, okay, if that makes sense, we might be, can get a last mile, but if not, we decline, so we can steer, okay, with that budget come to us. So anyway, uh, okay, we have a first, okay, do we have a second?
Do we foresee using a general fund?
We don't foresee, we don't foresee to like using that yet, but now he want to just blankly and stop everything, this and that, I think it's too early to preempt this, it's more like a political movement, and I okay, not happy about a political movement for that, because anything we want to do it, we come to city council for discussion. And why we need to do this before even we have anything coming in.
You said there's no discussion, but you're injecting an opinion.
Okay, got it, okay, so let's, let's vote, do we have a second?
To repeat, my, 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 the mother may I is to establish this policy, that we will not use any general fund money for, for, for additional expenditure for the Health Department, for the benefit of my colleague.
Do I have a second?
I have one question. For Paulina or Tom? Uh, do grants go through the general fund? Can grants go through the general fund?
Yeah, grant go to general fund.
Do they?
Can they go through the general fund?
Grant.
Grants.
When we can receive the grant, when they go, can they go to general fund?
They usually, no.
No.
They will go to a separate account, so they don't get, um, if I, Stephanie's up there.
I, I, I don't think so, I think some grant will go to general fund.
Some grants require fund or matching, and so.
Yeah, but it still go to general fund.
I'll have Stephanie confirm.
Depending upon the grant, it could go to the general fund. Typically, we don't put any grants in the general fund, though, they go to a special revenue fund, we have a fund if it's a if it's a random grant, that's a non-federal fund that we use for grants that are not federal.
So are you saying that if we got a million dollar grant that potentially could go through the general fund?
We probably, I wouldn't recommend putting a million dollars into the general fund for a grant.
But it could, that's not understanding, can it?
So if we're doing a reimbursement, we have taken stuff out of the general fund, but if they're giving us a million dollars straight up, we're gonna put it in a separate fund, so that we can segregate it and track it appropriately for the grant purposes.
Uh, you say potentially can be go to general fund?
Depending upon the grant, it could.
Okay, thank you, uh, okay, uh, do we have a second?
I, I can uh re-modify if, if this could help my colleague, um, if there is money that's dedicated for this, and it's money that is for something, but it's not costing us anything, uh, and let's say it's money for it, and it goes to this, that, that's not going to hurt the, 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 the city's budget, I just wanna protect the general fund.
I understand.
If I can modify that, then would that?
I, I want to say this, because we using different fund, for example, we using the water fund to buy car for the co-enforcement. So the, there's a lot of time, the, the grant not necessarily go into what this, but it's still a grant we can use. So if you identify only for that, then you restrict it way too much, that we cannot even get anything, okay, to get a thing done. But anyway.
That invites uh issues of games, games with, with budgets, so.
Do we have a second? Okay, one, two, three, no second, okay, the motion die. Okay, and do we have another one, uh, council Kento?
No.
Okay, and uh, Rosario? Okay, and yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I just wanna make sure, uh, moving forward, that our agendas get updated, I know oral communication still states five minutes per speaker. So we've.
No, it's three minutes, no, it's a week, change to three minutes, now it's done.
I just wanna make sure.
We, we have a first reading, next time we, the second reading, then you will print that, okay, we, we already approve. Uh, do we have a council comment, and Brian, go ahead?
Yeah, I just wanna, just to make it clear, uh, uh, we're not voting on if we support or against the Health Department. I think uh council member Contos' uh concert request to ensure that any new funding for that department has to be approved by this council is essential to ensuring accountability uh to our residents and to our constituents, and I uh, uh, applaud council member Contos for bringing that forward, because I, I wanna make sure also that uh, funding is used right, and that we're not affecting uh funding from the general fund, but that there's opportunities for grants and other, if there is opportunities for grants or other funding, that we don't eliminate that, so ensuring accountability and being able to say yes or no uh, to items that come before that department, I, I wanna preserve my right to deny or approve those options.
Yes, uh, we, we, we all have a chance, when they come to us, we all have a chance to say yes or no, okay, any other comment?
Uh, my next comment is uh, yeah, I just wanna make sure that we are um applying for federal grants. Um, these, these grants are, are worth millions and millions of dollars, and if we're not applying for them, then what, what are we doing, we're, we're losing opportunities for training, for emergency operations training, these are grants that uh, that this council director for people to, for, for the, the city to apply for, and now we're learning that one of them was not applied for, so if we're gonna, if we're gonna pay for consultants to do emergency operation stuff, then it makes no sense to have someone like that, if we're not gonna take advantage and use the funding that the federal government has to help our city prepare it for the next disaster, and so I'll just leave my comment like that, and, and also, it's important that when this council puts deadlines on, when things have to be posted or, or brought back, and these deadlines are met, uh, it's an obligation, it's a direction by this council, and it has to be followed, but that's it, thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, council member, okay, and uh, city manager, just, okay, and if we have a chance to have a federal fund, okay, or grant, please, okay, and have a candidate to apply, okay, and if other, others. okay, or grant, please, okay, and have a county to apply, okay, and if, uh, other, others, uh, city council have any suggestion can provide for you. Okay, and, uh, any other comment? It's a midnight now, five minutes, you want to wait for five minutes? No, no, I don't wait, okay, any other council, okay, any council, any, any other, do we have?
Make a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, media adjourn, thank you so much, it's a long.